Twenty, two thousand nineteen at nine oh two AM. You would please rise with me, join with me in the place of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome again, everyone. Everyone's got your mics on? Okay. Call this meeting to order. Do we have any amendments to the agenda? I have one. I would like to add current litigation to executive session.
Very good.
Good.
Sure, so that's one, what is it? One ninety-two six Excel sub two.
H.
I think some H and F.
H, that's what I thought it was.
Thank you.
Morning, Commissioner. All right. Got Sonoma tie. All right, any other amendments to the agenda? Motion, please? Yes.
On the discussion items, my sixty vacant and absent properties registration ordinance, I'm not opposed to discussing that today is just a very complicated issue, and I think it might be in the best interest of the board to delay that or even consider a workshop as soon as possible, entirely in favor of the approach and review of this, but I think it might be best because it is so complicated that I've just spent a lot of time on it today. That's fully my view. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a number of questions on that item also, so I would concur with Commissioner Boyce on that one.
Is that a formal motion to then remove it from the agenda and put it on a workshop in the future? Or what's the, or to just, you know, just questioning, what's the function of the discussion right now?
Who and who is speaking?
Sorry, that was County Council.
Oh, hi. Thank you. Okay.
Just depending on, you know, the nature of the agenda and the amount of items on there for time management, do you want to do, you know, do you want to take that off and just put it on a workshop? Or do you want to take time for today? That's a question.
Ms. Schmelzer?
Yes, we do have a speaker here who can provide some information related to that topic since they are here. I wouldn't want to just postpone that. It is on the, on the agenda just for discussion. That's why it's there. It's not there for, as an action item. If the board is agreeable today to seeing it move forward, at that point, we'll have to schedule it for a first reading. So the purpose today is for discussion.
I'm not opposed to that.
Commissioner Boyce?
Yeah, I'm okay either way. I would rather, before I think about getting into a workshop and really iron out some of the questions, but on both the consensus of the board and a general way here.
Okay, well, I think we're, we'll just move to discuss it today, and then we can decide at the end of the discussion what we'd like to do further with it.
Very good. That's all I have in terms of agenda amendments.
So I move that we approve the agenda as amended.
Second here, Mr. Chair.
Any further discussion? Roll, please.
Vice Chair Boyce.
Yes?
Commissioner Gold.
Aye.
Chair Pash.
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
All right, next, we're going to do our public comments. We have a kind of busy schedule today, so I would please ask that you are punctual in your.
Chair, if I may.
Yes?
I don't have a lot of duty to have to report today. I apologize, but I want the board and the community to know why I'm not there today. I appreciate very much the support of Representative Schmelzer and yourself to get me here at the AOC convention. Quickly, good meeting last night. Are you still on?
Yes, you are.
Thank you. Good meeting last night with the executive committee that is choosing to AOC executive director and the two finalists out of Fort are Sid Hyken, who I introduced you all to earlier this year, and a gentleman by the name of Dan Chandler from Portland. So I think we're going to get a good representation there. We will not know till later today how that decision goes. Earliest morning, I had with Dean and Rob, OHA, who is giving us tremendous support. Very good meeting with her. Also Linda Lind and Gina Owens, who I've met, the Region Six Northwest Police Service Office, who worked for type of law, so we're setting meeting up with him. That's really all I have. I just wanted to, you know, modern technology can almost be in two places at the same time, and just really appreciate the board's support. Very important issues up here in Central County. Thank you.
All right, so continuing on with public comments, I ask that we keep them to about three minutes if we can. First up will be Mary Rowe. Good morning, Ms. Rowe.
Hi, there's a keyboard here.
That's all right. You can just leave it there. Or just set it on the table if you'd like to.
Okay. All right, I had put in requests for two public comments, but I only have one, Chair Pash.
Okay, thank you.
For today, I'll save the other one.
If you would do me a favor, Ms. Rowe, and just pull that taller microphone over just a little bit toward you.
I don't know how to do that. Last time I tried, I broke it.
Okay.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Thank you, Nancy.
There you go.
Thanks. I'm Mary Rowe. I was privileged to go on a tour of our jail a few weeks ago. Our jail is a dungeon. I know something about jails as I have an MSW with a concentration in social justice and corrections. I have toured jails, juvenile halls, youth authority facilities, San Quentin, Pleasanton, and the California Department of Corrections Northern Reception Center of Asheville, have worked at friends outside, the Sonoma County Juvenile Probation Department Work Program, developing job placements for youth, and for the California State Legislature's Joint Committee for Revision of the Penal Code, where I researched alternatives to incarceration in California prisons due to prison overcrowding, and in fact, I ordered copies of the committee's resulting publication titled Prison Overcrowding: Emergency Measures and Alternative Forms of Punishment, which should be at our post office tomorrow, and I will give you each a copy of then. I also did research for my master's project at CDC's Northern Reception Center of Asheville, and have other relevant experience. Our jail's capacity is too limited to permit even a fair portion of sentences for violent crimes to be carried out. Deputies must creatively shuffle inmates around in order to prevent violence and other serious problems. One small room serves as a sole place for all inmate arraignments, meetings with attorneys, mental health counseling, religious instruction, and I'm pretty sure that it is also where the nurse examines inmates. Picture eight inmates in a cell about two or three times the size of your bathroom with no windows, the steam from showers from eight prisoners, and a vent that doesn't keep up. The exercise room is small and has nothing in it, as there is no padded cell, prisoners, some of whom may be having a mental health episode, have their arms and legs fastened to a restraint chair until their attitude, behavior, and ability to cope improves. There is insufficient wheelchair access to showers and during inmate processing. Please prioritize applying for grants, including ADA grants for our jail quickly. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll let you know, Ms. Rowe, that we are currently moving toward exactly that for a new jail and a new courthouse building, so.
I thought that the block grants, it was too soon?
That'll be spring, but yes, we are moving to, on the jail as quickly as we can, so.
Okay.
All that is in the process. David Barnes?
Oh.
Okay. Ms. Crook?
Good morning. Good morning, Sina.
Good morning. My name is Sina Crook. I'm a county employee, and I'm here today as a member of the SEIU negotiation team. I wanted to address the Board of Commissioners. We SEIU county employees have been involved in labor negotiations with the county since March over the economics opener of our contract. We asked for our step increases to be unfrozen, the county to pay the full premium of our health insurance, and to give us a five percent cost of living. The county said no to removing the freeze on our steps. They offered to increase the amount paid for our health insurance premiums and offered us a three percent cost of living. We are okay with the increased payment for the insurance premium, but the hang-up in the negotiations is the cost of living the county has offered us and fairness. The last time cost of living raises were given, we SEIU employees received the smallest amount. The county recently settled a contract with the Sheriff's Department with a three point four percent cost of living and are offering us a three percent. We understand the wage differences between the two unions and have no problem with that. We are proud of our Sheriff's Department and the great work they do. What we do have a problem with is the cost of living pay should be the same for all in Curry County. The cost of food, gas, and utilities are the same for all of us. Why should some be compensated more for it than others? Where's the fairness in that? During our last negotiation meeting, we offered to take less insurance premium payment in exchange for the three point four percent cost of living. The total cost of that offer is less than the cost of the county's offer, but we were told no again. It doesn't make sense for the county to reject our offer to reduce the cost unless the goal is to treat county employees unfairly. We have asked to have the Board of Commissioners vote on our most recent offer, and we urge you to agree with it. The cost is less than the proposal you have not budged on, and it will provide the cost of living fairness we SEIU employees have been seeking. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. So that's all the public comments I have on this here in particular. I want to make a public comment at the beginning of this meeting, which is rare for me, but I just want to let everyone know that the county's facing some serious things with our, our public health. We've had, CCH has given us notice that they no longer want to do public health in Curry County, and they've given us a time limit to give that back to the county. In two thousand twelve, this county worked for several years with commissioners to provide health services that will protect the citizens of this county, and CCH came forward and asked us to trust them and allow them to do this. So this county did do that. Again, in a meeting in May, their director came to my office and said that he would like to give everything back to the county. Then a few months later, he surprised me. We began to plan for that, and then a few months later, he surprised us, saying that he only wanted to give us back the public health portion of that and keep the mental health portion of it. So I just want the citizens of the county to know that we are currently in litigation because it has reached that point that we have not been able to come to a, to a, an agreement of how this county will protect its citizens, and I just want you all to be eyes wide open that this board is seated here to protect the citizens of this county first, and we will do whatever that takes to accomplish it. Those are the comments I have on that. Ms. Schmelzer, you had a comment?
I did. It's a little out of character right now, but I did just want to let everyone know that it is, the hot holiday season is coming upon us, and the county employees did have a project whereby at their recent potluck, they had employees fill out little leaves saying what they were thankful for this year in Curry County, and so we just wanted to open that up to the public and let them know that if they are interested in filling out a leaf to show what they are thankful for, they are in the Board of Commissioners office. We will be doing a thankful tree in the hallway, and then added to that, the employees are looking to help people that need rides to meals or lonely during the holidays to let us know so that we can arrange them with a pal or an employee that can work with them to make sure they're not alone or without a meal on Thanksgiving.
All right. Next, we have five consent agenda to appoint two members to the Port Orford Cemetery Maintenance District Board.
I move that we make the appointment of the two members to the Port Orford Cemetery Maintenance District Board.
Do I have a second?
Mr. Chair.
I'm sorry?
He said second.
I seconded that.
Okay. Any further discussion?
I just have one. Earlier at one of our recent meetings, we indicated that if they did not have a full board by December, we were going to begin dissolution processes. With this appointment, we do not have to do that.
Okay. Roll, please.
Commissioner Gold.
Aye.
Vice Chair Boyce.
Yes?
Chair Pash.
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
All right, next, we're going to go to discussion action items. A, Curry County four H and Extension Service District Financial Review, Cheryl McDonald. Ms. McDonald? Strike that from the discussion action items. She's not here. And this is for administrative management, office manager, Oregon State University Curry County Extension Offices. Wow. We help fund them, is that correct? Through our budget?
Yes, we do.
This is a district? B, resolution supporting inmate access to their medical provider, Ms. Schmelzer.
Yes, we had had some conversations with the Sheriff's Office earlier in the year, and they had shared with us the cost of providing medical care to inmates and the burden that had on the budget, and specifically, one of the things is you really can't predict what that's going to cost you because you don't know what the needs are of your inmates. So we have had some discussions with Al Care about that matter, as well as some other discussions going on, and Senator Merkley is actually proposing two bills that would help address that whereby inmates could retain their federal benefits, which also includes OHA, since that is funded through the federal government. So what you have before you is a resolution in support of Senator Merkley's bills. The Sheriff's Association has also gone on record in support of this. If the board supports this resolution, the sheriff would also sign on in support to this resolution. But we do have Joel Hensley from the Sheriff's Office here, who does work, manages the jail basically, and he is here to just provide some more insight on those costs and the impact that having the county, having to fund that, ensure their medical bills right now has on the budget.
Mr. Hensley? Good morning, sir.
Morning. Lieutenant Joel Hensley, Curry County Sheriff's Office. I am the current jail commander and have been so for, I think, going on six years now or since Sheriff Ford became sheriff. I was contacting regards to just providing some details into how health benefits would impact Curry County. It first came across as just to financially assist the county in picking up a lot of the medical bills that were faced right now. Currently, we have two inmates that their medications for one month come in at about seventy-five hundred dollars, just for those two, not including anyone else we have in custody. Each emergency room trip costs us approximately twenty-two hundred dollars now, no matter what the incident was, just due to ER costs, the exams are available to the doctors that they use, CTs, they cost a lot of money. So the financial part of it would help out a lot. But if inmates had access to medical, it'd make a huge impact on the community itself. We would have resources to help stabilize inmates, get them into treatment, and establish them with a primary care provider. Right now, we can't even get somebody into alcohol and drug treatment if they're in custody because OHP cannot apply. So we actually have to do this juggling of releasing them, but then having a parole and probation officer pick them up immediately and take them to treatment, and then, and while they're en route to treatment, we're calling OHA to get them signed back up on benefits. When they get to the front door, they have benefits back. If they don't, they don't let them in. So these are some of the challenges that we're, we're doing just as a normal operation. Whenever somebody's in custody, we can help them get stabilized physically and mentally. They will not have access to illegal drugs. They won't be forced to sell their drugs to survive in support of themselves in the street. The support we would be able to provide would also be a peer support and by our paid deputies, just, you know, trying to help somebody from one step to the other. Inmates will qualify for drug and alcohol rehab. The county would have more mental health treatments, therapy, and providers if we could bill for the services. We would have a true clinic that would be able to provide health and reproductive services to all inmates, kind of like a public health. Like public health? I put a little thing in here in my comment, without bankrupting the county, we would be able to even have smoking sensation programs, other WIC programs, mommy and me type programs. We could do all that from the jail because we would have a captive audience, that they can't go anywhere, they're there. So we might as well, we can, right now, mental health is helping us out with some of these, but it's a free service, so we sometimes take a backseat crisis, they're always there for us to help out, but we had an introduction to treatment program. They lost a provider, they can't come and do that anymore for us. But if we were a paid service, or if we had our own counselor that was essentially on salary that we could bill for services, we would have a constant, consistent program for the inmates. The big part for the community too, it'd allow the sheriff to keep and hold people accountable, that he does not have to make a tough decision on releasing people due to medical need. I also believe that the county would be able to find medical providers to provide services to the jail because we could bill for the services. Right now, we're also struggling with trying to find a health provider for the, for Curry County, as you know. CCH ended their contract with us rather abruptly, and so we're trying our steps through that. If there was OHP coverage, then the jails across the state could provide more in-depth care and probably lead to less medical tort claims, which would lessen the liability, which would then lower the jail's impact on our insurer and save all counties premiums across the state. These are just a couple ideas, but I'm sure if further discussion is needed, we could compile some more.
Commissioner Gold?
I just have one question. I noticed that you said that you release them to go to drug addition things. Could you also release some of the high people that need the medicine for a day or so so they could go get their medicine and then come back? Just curious.
With that, the individuals that we have, if, if the sheriff and we felt comfortable releasing them, they wouldn't be in custody. If we thought that they could be part of a home monitoring system, we do have ankle bracelets available that we do tend to use.
Yeah, I realize each case is different, but I'm just.
Right, and that's what we're finding now.
Trying to find a way to skirt around the mess.
Correct, no, absolutely. And being in my position, signing those, initialing those bills, you know, it, it tears me up because of how much money it's costing, especially this year. It's, it's, the costs have just skyrocketed. So we've looked at that. The problem is that the individuals that I have, they're charged with measure eleven crimes, which are the worst crimes there are. And with those crimes, we can't say, hey, can you go out for the day? Please come back.
Oh, I'd put them with someone for sure.
Well, the problem is, though, they're still in custody then.
Even with a parole officer?
That is correct.
Okay.
Joel, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Because NACO right now is on the Hill this week in Washington, looking at this for veterans. So my question is, if you know, the issue with veterans is if, once they go in to a jail situation and they lose their, their VA benefits, it takes the VA about thirty to forty-five days to get them back in the rolls because they literally canceled their policy. So they have to reapply for a policy, and that's something NACO is trying to get straightened out. Is it the same for civilians? I mean, do, do the healthcare providers cancel their policy, or immediately upon release, have they reinstated?
It's not immediate upon release unless we're involved in that, that piece of the puzzle. So whenever we're mandated to report who's in custody, and so which cancels their OHP. So once, that's an automatic report that happens in the background as soon as somebody's booked in. So it gets canceled, but turned on, it doesn't work that way. We have to facilitate that by providing a form to the inmate. If they can't fill it out for whatever reason, then we end up filling it out, or we try to, we had a provider that would come in and sign people up, that's gone by the wayside, so it's fallen on deputies again, but we're trying to help people because when they get out, they do need to get their medications, they do need to get stuff, they need to make appointments, but they can't get, they show up for dental appointment, and they get, they are told that they don't have coverage. So if this continued through, it would be a seamless transition, and it'd restore faith in the system that we're trying, trying to help them.
Okay. Great. Anything further? Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Well, I applaud Senator Merkley's work on this, and I would certainly make a motion that we support this.
I will second that.
Do we have any further comments? Roll, please.
Commissioner Gold.
Aye.
Vice Chair Boyce.
Yes?
Chair Pash.
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
All right, next, we are going to have vacant and owner-absent properties registration ordinance, Ms. Schmelzer.
Okay, this is a follow-up to what Sergeant Hensley was talking about, but what we're finding is that.
Commissioner, could you mute your mic, please? Thank you.
What we're finding is that a significant amount of the people that are being booked into the jail are actually, I shouldn't say significant, but sixteen percent of the people that are booked into the jail do not reside in Curry County. And that does not include the homeless individuals because we don't, they don't have a place of residence, but for people from outside the county, sixteen percent are non-county residents. And what we're also finding is with the code enforcement division, which Dave Fortman manages, he has seen anywhere from thirty to fifty percent of those violations are from people that do not live in Curry County. Conservatively, he estimates thirty percent of his cases are from, on properties that where people do not reside here. Mr. Fortman's cases typically involve things, a lot of nuisance complaints, where people have trashed the properties, homeless encampments, or people that have a RV park and they keep going property to property, or perhaps you're having buildings where the owner does not live here, so people are occupying or squatting on that property. Anyways, these, the fact that we have properties which require a lot of attention from people that do not reside in the county does put a strain on law enforcement and on code enforcement. At the current time, we cannot increase taxes to pay for these services, so we have to get creative and say, how are we going to pay for these services? What the proposed ordinance in front of you does is, it says that if you do not reside in Curry County, and you're not here to watch over your property, there tends to be added need for law enforcement and code enforcement to patrol some of these properties or respond to stuff that happens on some of these properties. What we've done is looked at the jail, and the general, right now, the jail relies on the general fund for one point six million dollars. Communications, which is, such as dispatch, uses three quarters of a million dollars. That right now is completely funded by the people paying taxes, of course, which includes people that do not live here. Code enforcement requires one hundred and sixty thousand dollars to run that program. If you look at the part of that, what it costs the people that do not reside here for the jail, the sixteen percent, basically, that are causing some of the issues for the jail, that is basically two hundred and sixty, two hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars for the jail, and one hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars is what they cost dispatch. From the code enforcement side, those people cost forty-eight thousand dollars. So looking at that, saying, okay, how do, how do we recoup the money from, on these properties which are causing problems? Basically, if you look at it and you say, we need to pay for that part of the jail, we need to pay for that part of code enforcement, plus an admin fee, it comes out that if these, if people that did not reside in Curry County paid one hundred and nineteen dollars to register their properties, that would fund that sixteen percent of the jail and communications, and it would fund that thirty percent of code enforcement. Basically, that saves us quite a bit on the budget, and it addresses some of the issues that we're having on those properties as well. We do have, in the unincorporated areas of the county, there are four thousand two hundred and seventy-two parcels that are owned by people that do not reside in the county. So that is how many properties that we would be looking to have register, to have their properties. I don't want to say looked at because we're not going to be providing private security, but these are the ones that draw attention. They tend to attract people that know that there's nobody residing there or living there or occupying that property. They tend to attract people that know that there's nobody residing there, or living there, or occupying that property. So, you know, currently patrol, code enforcement, they do tend to drive by these properties. They know there's associated problems with them, so they tend to just kind of keep an eye on them. This is a way to try and recoup the funds that our taxpayers are paying for these properties that are owned by people outside of the county that are not here to watch the properties themselves. I have the draft ordinance in front of you, it still needs a legal review. There are some minor changes, you know, to make sure that it's very clear what the intent of this ordinance is. There's also been some changes that were suggested to the ordinance that weren't in here, one such as saying that the original draft of this said Curry County and law enforcement could require certain things. You know, it should say that they should recommend certain things to reduce problems with some of these properties. And just, I need to tweak the numbers at the very end, which says how the proceeds from this ordinance would be divided. Now that we have the numbers of what it costs the jail and what it costs code enforcement, you know, we just have to make sure that the enforcement distributions are consistent with that. So there's some minor tweaking that has to go on with it, but that is the primary principle of the ordinance, is to say, our taxpayers are paying for monitoring and taking care of problems associated with properties that do not have somebody in the county present to watch or monitor those properties themselves. And this is one way to recoup those funds.
One more, please.
Okay.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes, please. Thank you, David Barnes. I've seen something like this before, it came up for this county a year or so ago. It was the tax on knitters and crafters, so that they could monitor hazmats. This ordinance proposes that you're going to charge a $19 fee on all non-homeowner resided in properties in Curry County. You just said there's 4,200 of them. That means that every, you must be including every single rental property in this county. It must also include every vacation property, every rainbird property. You know, from where I sit in my house, I see five houses. Yours is the only one that's permanently owner-occupied, all the rest are rented. I have an Airbnb across the street, I have a rainbird next to him, and I have a long-term rental at the end of my driveway. All of those, we've been paying this tax. They're all occupied to some degree or another. You know, you say this like you're charging out-of-state owners for owning property here, but these people still pay property taxes on their house. You know, this is just an additional tax on them. You know, I just, I have a problem with this, you know. I just, you have enforcement in here of aesthetic codes, of no weeds and vegetation. Install security lighting, or hire security guards. You know, those are things that happen in gated communities with homeowners associations. This is rural Curry County. You know, one of the comments in this was that reasonable people be able to determine whether a property is vacant or empty. I defy you, you know, you drive past houses in Curry County, I defy you to notify which ones are vacant or empty. Just by the amount of things in the yard, how well the lawn is trimmed. You know, that's, it's ridiculous. But, you know, in the end, what's this fee for? This fee is to pay for more, is to pay someone to collect this fee, to hire more people to go find fines to collect more fees. You know, it's government feeding on itself, it's a never-ending beast that just grows bigger and bigger and bigger. My public comment earlier was, I put it in now, you know, Commissioner Boyce gave a dissertation on the role of corporations in the September 6th meeting. This board is not a corporation, you know, and if you approach it as such, you have the wrong outlook on your service. This is a body elected to enact a policy that represents the will, ethos, and character of the people of this county. Unlike a corporation, you should not consider yourselves by successful by how big you can grow government, but rather measure your success in how little you impose yourselves on the lives of your citizens. Imposing more fees, fines, regulations, and more government intrusion is not the path to be considered successful. It's the road that's going to make Curry County just like everywhere else. Thank you.
Thank you. So we need to still have a legal opinion on this, I'm sorry, Commissioner Gold, do you have a comment?
I was just wondering, are other counties doing this with their unincorporated area that you know of, or?
So this was based off of a model out of, from the valley, I believe it was the city of Medford.
So it was a city?
It was a city, yeah. So what this would do is, if this is enacted, it would bring $508,000 into our general fund. To me, that's $508,000 we don't have to take from the road reserves.
Well, and another concern is whether it would include rentals, because rentals, you know, usually have people in there, they're... I can't say they're always taking care of things, but...
Yeah, so there's, so what this does is, it would require the fee for anyone that does not, their mailing address is not in Curry County. So if you, Commissioner Gold, would have a rental here in Curry County, it would not apply to you because you actually live in Curry County. So it's people that do not reside in Curry County that are not here to watch over that rental. Or vacant properties. Okay.
And I'll... Yes, go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you, two questions, one for you, did you ask me if I'm going to go to mute my mic?
Yeah, there was, we could hear a loud shuffling of paper, and it was difficult to talk over that.
I hope you said it with a smile, but I do apologize, and I'm smiling now because, yes, I'm really guilty. So thanks for clarifying that, and I always have on mute, just that one time. Commissioner Schmelzer, obviously, a lot of work went into this. It's kind of a triple-edged sword, if I could just offer these quick comments. There were one, we need to find a second code enforcement officer, I think the board has very small three of that. And that's the basis of public safety and cleaning up the county, and maybe that's not the best way to characterize it, but we know we have some serious issues out there, and it's growing. I wanted, Mr. Bass just referenced, Coast County, right now, they are in a very civil position. And if they haven't already done it, they seem to have considerable support for requiring landlords to have garbage, weekly garbage services available to their tenants. I'm not ready to promote that yet, but I am researching that, and I'm wondering in the big picture, how that might develop a little bit, on where this direction is going with absentee properties. I don't want to do any discouraging, but the second edge of the sword is, yes, discouraging potential landlords with the shortage of housing we have, we do need help. And I would be very disappointed we don't get that second code enforcement officer, just in the interest of of all that we're trying to accomplish through, and we're from Langley's Airport Road, all the way down to the southern parts of Harbor, South County, and making our code enforcement officers, or officers, as supportive as we possibly can. So there's my take on this, it is complicated, as I said in the beginning of the meeting. And I think we're gonna, I think we're gonna have to consider really digging deep into this, learning all we can. There's several references, those ordinance for notifying lenders, timber companies, how about mobile homes? So it's all out there, but I'm not opposed to spending that time, and I think this generally is probably a good approach. Bill, thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you. So council, we have to have a legal decision from, or opinion from you on this. And I'm wondering, should we set this for a workshop, or put it back on the agenda for another time? Your recommendation, Ms. Schmelzer?
If the board wants to do a workshop, we could look at one the second week in December for it. If you want to go that route. Or we could schedule it for first reading, or further discussion that week as well, too. December 11th, I think, would be our, the date we could meet, that'd be a special meeting.
My thing is, you know, on this, we've got a lot of vacant properties in the county, and you know, some might see this as a burden to taxpayers, an additional burden to taxpayers. But for the amount of calls that are put out on an annual basis through this county, not only through code enforcement, but from our sheriff's department, and the amount of additional hours spent, if I'm actually having someone, if I have a second home up here, I'm actually glad to pay the $120 a year, to know that I've got, you know, maybe a sheriff's deputy driving by my house occasionally every now and then to look at things, and you know, to, for $10 a month, 30 cents a day, whatever it is. That's a lot of comfort for a few pennies. If that happens, and I'm not saying that they are through this going to do that, but also to have a lot of the homes that are second homes that are not occupied currently, we all know who's going to be in the yards and the front porches of those houses. And they're the people that don't have anywhere else to go. So, you know, we have a lot of issues with that. I don't see, you know, something of this nature as offensive as a homeowner. I also know of people, when I was getting ready to move here, I had calls from realtors asking me for tax haven money. You know, to be able to come up and buy a few properties, and just put that money on the side for a while, for a tax-structured debt. So, you know, again, I think it's in the best interest of the county to know the properties that it has, and I don't think it would be a burden on our citizens. I would suggest that we schedule it for a first reading and further comments after council has his opinion. So maybe for our next meeting, have a first reading on it, and then we can make any adjustments to that.
Okay, that would be...
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner?
Yeah, I really want to do the workshop, that's my preference here. Not to be indiscreet with you, but I think that might be after workshop, thank you.
Commissioner Gold?
I'm okay either way. Do we have enough material here to spend a whole hour or two on a workshop? I guess is my big question.
Well, I guess from staff's perspective, you know, if there seems to be a lot of public concern over something, or contact about something, I would say move it further to a workshop. We've heard from one person, it's a, it's a pretty simple ordinance, it's not quite three pages, double-spaced. We've done the research, we know, you know, what it does is, it helps our taxpayers not have to pay $500,000 towards properties that aren't demanding our services.
Let me do this, let me make a motion that we bring this back for a first reading, and then if we have any, and by then, Council Huddler will have his opinion, and we can make changes from there.
I'm okay with that.
I'll second that.
Further discussion? Roll, please.
Mr. Gold?
Aye.
Vice Chair Boyce?
No.
Commissioner Pash?
Aye.
Motion carried two to one.
All right, next we're going to deal with 6D order for vegetation maintenance on Curry County properties in Harbor.
Okay, so what this is, is we have a, what I would call a problem property in Harbor. It's a county-owned property. It is home to some large encampments. There is a lot of debris on there, I have code enforcement, Officer Fortman did provide a file on it along with photos, which is in the packet, which has been shared with the public as well. We're having a lot of issues on the property. One way to address issues is what we see in the cities, is they trim up their vegetation, they maintain their vegetation. It becomes less inviting to people that want to reside there and pollute the property. So what we, my authority as the Director of Operations is to just order that the property be cleaned up, and we maintain the property and shore up the trees. However, because these are controversial, because homeless issues are controversial, because anytime you're trimming the vegetation on something, the public is used to seeing as completely wooded, it does become very controversial sometimes. So, in this case, I did want the board to weigh in on it, whether or not we should expend the funds to clean the property up. Mr. Fortman has worked with the roads department to get an estimate on that, it is going to be quite expensive, it's around... Do we have a bid on it, Mr. Fortman?
No, and we now have a vendor that's interested in bidding on it.
A vendor would, I'm getting my properties mixed up, we have another property that's going to cost about $50,000 to clean up. That's not this one, then, so that's good. But this is just an example of what happens when you don't address something. We've let it go on for years. When people kick their homeless out of one property, this is where they tend to go. We need to keep a better eye on our properties. This one happens to be owned by the county, so it's our fault, we should have been watching it better and looking at solutions earlier. But we are looking to get approval to go ahead and clean up the property. Mr. Fortman, do you have more you could add to that, since you've been out to the property several times?
Absolutely, just one addition to it is, the primary homeless encampment started on county property, over acre. It does spread to three adjacent properties, two of which are privately owned, one is owned by the state. So this problem has now grown to four property owners. The two private property owners, both I spoke to, are both in agreement to abate their problems on their property. But they want to do it in conjunction with the county doing it, so that we don't have a resurgence of the problem on all the properties. And one said that I was welcome to speak for him today, he couldn't be there.
Will they, will we be sharing the fees of cleaning up the property then? You say you have a private vendor that may go in to give a bid to clean it? Would it be to clean the entire thing?
No, we're responsible, the two private property owners know that they're responsible for their portion, and they're not blocking at it.
And what is the extent that they're going to clean up? I mean, they're just going to trim some grass, or are they going to clearcut everything other than trees?
Well, it's not a clearcut.
I don't mean, I don't mean that, I misspoke with that, I mean, leaving the trees and mowing everything else down.
That's the basic thing, is making it, removing the visual barriers from the streets to where the homeless encampment is. But it's anticipated that some of the trees will have to be trimmed, because they've made a perfect canopy over the top, which attracts the homeless, protecting them from the weather. A good example of that is, in Harbor, at the Checko Bridge, about a year or two ago, the city in ODOT trimmed similar noles on their portions of it. And actually, the public response has been pretty positive, thinking that that was for beauty, and it was actually for transient issues.
Another question I have, sir, is... Well, Commissioner Gold, go ahead.
I have a couple of questions. Question number one, they are on our property, are we liable if something were to happen there?
That would be a legal opinion for council?
I think we have some defenses.
Okay, and then the second question is, are you planning on cutting the trees down, or limbing them, or just getting rid of the brush, or?
It would be a thinning, not cutting them all down. Getting rid of the brush down to ground to the roadway height is the primary, and then thinning the canopy, so it's not a protective tent over the top of them.
Okay.
The same thing we do on our forests.
Do we have, another question I had, do we have signage there that says no overnight camping?
No, sir, we do not currently.
Because then we could have, if we maintain that signage, we can then have law enforcement come in and remove those people. Or code enforcement. What you need is one more thing to do, I understand.
One of the problems with that property is, in trying to work with the people that are in camp there, first of all, their first comments to me was, we're not homeless, we don't need your services, this is our home. Then trying to talk to them about the different state and county ordinances that apply to the way they are living, several of them said, we know what the Ninth Circuit says, and we've been evicted in other places, and you're going to have to do everything the Ninth Circuit says before we're going to move.
Oh, we don't.
So, they know the statutes, and then using the third arm that's available under Article 10 of issuing citations, for example, the homeless, several of the homeless people in conversation have said, issue me a ticket, I don't care, I'm not going to pay for it. And then when we talked about, well, if you don't pay for the ticket, you could go to a warrant, they go, yeah. So what, nobody's going to put me in jail for it. So we've run out of enforcement options.
I happen to know of a town in southern, I don't want to say San Francisco, but south of San Francisco,
San Mateo County.
That they posted signs, people wouldn't move, and they had their highway department go in and remove the camp. So, I don't know if that Ninth Circuit, if you're posting signs properly, I think, you know, law enforcement has a louder voice in that kind of...
Well, the Ninth Circuit Court upholds that no one has the right to occupy a piece of public land on a 24-hour basis. But the Ninth Circuit Court also upholds that from 10:00 PM to 7:00 AM, an unoccupied piece of public land can be occupied if there are no other resources available to the people that are using it. So posting a sign is a great idea, but we're still addressing the issue of, then it would be from 10:00... but we're still addressing the issue of then it would be from 10:00 PM to 7:00 AM. They could legally come back onto the property.
Not if there's other places they could go, and that's the fine line. And unless the hotels and motels in the county are sold out or in that area, or other campgrounds, then they can't stay there, correct?
Well, it gets into-
I don't think it's hotels and motels. I think it's the resources for, you know, right, the community resources. Sorry, Mr. Chair, yeah. And then the other thing, there's one nuance as well to what Mr. Fortman's saying, that the people, there's a, there's sort of a burden on the campers to show that they are involuntarily homeless. So that's the other issue. Only the involuntarily homeless have the ability to stay on the properties. And it's, and I don't say they have the ability to stay on the properties. We just cannot treat them as criminals when they're, we can't criminalize their status of involuntarily homeless.
There is one other factor when you talk about liability. We are getting complaints from the neighbors about not only their safety and smell and aesthetic issues, but one of the adjacent neighbors is under chemotherapy for cancer. And with the advent of winter and the illegal fires in there, the smoke and the plastics are going into their place. And there, they just presented a note from their doctor that their health's been affected.
That's a public hazard, then.
Dave, I notice in your photos that there is food, food on site. It looks, I can only guess it came from a homeless shelter or something, where somebody gave a box of food to them. Clearly, it can't be cooked on site because there's no oven or microwaves, et cetera. Have we seen a problem with rats yet on this property?
Absolutely. The adjacent property owners say rats, snakes, small predators, everything. The whole ecology has been disturbed by this camp.
Okay. So if the board is agreeable to this, I would just say that we would want to amend the order to not designate the Road Department, but just to leave it vague enough that it's either the Road Department or the vendor, whichever one would cost the county the least amount of money. Okay.
So moved.
I'll second that.
Whoa.
Commissioner Boyce?
Well, thank you. Did we just have a motion?
I had a motion and a second, and then we're going to open it up to more comment.
Good enough. I'll delay my call now. No, I'd like to call it now.
Go ahead, yes.
I may just retire, thank you. So I want to get down and see that property, and I just didn't get the time. So I feel a little bit unsure of exactly where we should go. But everything costs money, and this is part of our cleanup. And I really appreciate, you know, Fortman and Director Schmelzer did on trying to figure this out and the best way to resolve this, and eventually, I believe, go into other areas of the county properties. I'm going to boldly ask, Mr. Chair, if the Road Department would simply take care of this substitute for approval or whatever other requirements we would need to do, and not bill us. They have the resources. They have the manpower. They have, yeah, the equipment. So I really would rather not get a bill back. And let's just see how this goes. We'll have to see if we can get along in the process. And yes, I'm ready to vote.
Commissioner, Ms. Schmelzer?
Just a comment on that. So when we take the Road Department and we take them off a different project and put them on this project, that is costing us quite a bit of money, and it means they're not able to get their other work done. So I just want the board to be clear. It's not like we're just asking them, "Hey, go out there and trim the trees." We're asking them to delay work on another project. So I think we do need to look at the cost analysis on that and say whichever one is the most cost-effective provider for that service is the one that we should contract with or work with.
Commissioner Gold?
That work is not budgeted within the Road Department's budget at this point in time.
That is correct.
Commissioner Boyce?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, I just have a little bit of disarray with that program. That department's well managed. They'll figure out a way to prioritize and get things done. I see this is a very high priority. I don't know how we would pay them anyway, so we're caught in a hard rock. Rock and a hard to find, and thank you.
Well, I don't think we're asking for them to do it right now. I think we're just asking for what would it cost? You know, if they were to bill it and also have a private company bill it. And I'm at least open to hear that, and then we can have further conversation with the Road Department on that. But I would like to expedite this if we can.
Very, thank you.
So, with a, yes?
Could I make a comment?
Well, okay.
And this really probably comes by virtue of me being around with the county for a while. I don't know if anybody has looked into the reason the county owns that property. It's not a tax-foreclosed piece of property. The county actually purchased it in 1981. I don't know the reason they purchased it, but I think if you probably went back, I think if you went back through the Commissioner's journals, you'll probably find that they purchased it for the Road Department to do road maintenance. And so I, my perception is that the Road Department is the property owner on that piece of property. And so to me, it doesn't make sense to place the burden for cleanup on the Code Enforcement Officer's budget. It's kind of counterproductive. I mean, I saw that in your order.
Yeah, and I can just comment on that real quick, Assessor Colon. When I was here the first time, I think it was April of 2016, I had requested the board designate those, the properties that were purchased or acquired for the Road Department, transfer them to the Road Department. Those that were for parks, transfer them to the Parks Department. A later board did transfer the ones for parks to the Parks Department, but the ones for roads were never actually transferred. So it still does fall under the just, basically, Board of Commissioners' responsibility at this point.
I think it's probably the Board of Commissioners to make the decision. But, you know, once again, I think it's the reason it was purchased by the county was for the Road Department, for road maintenance. And it was probably purchased with Road Department funds. And I think you probably go back to your Commercial Commissioners' Journals or whatever they are for 1981, you'll probably find that. And, you know, if the Road Department's the property owner, let, you know, I don't necessarily say that they themselves should do the cleanup if you get a contractor to do it for less, but maybe the burden for the cost should be on the Road Department.
Well, why don't we do this? Let me withdraw my motion, and let's do this. Let me get with our Roadmaster this week, and we can bring this back at the next meeting.
Okay, so we would be bringing it back on December 11th.
Okay. All right.
Agreed here. Thank you.
One. All right, next we have E. Terminating use of Channel 182, not renewing media services contract. Ms. Schmelzer?
Yes, so our contract with Brant Media is coming to the point where we have to decide whether we renew it or we go a different direction. We have their service through until the end of December. And so we looked at, you know, what does that contract cost us? You know, where could we get some cost savings? And one thing is that we can, is my recommendation, we not renew the contract with Brant Media. They've done a good job. It's just that with the reduction in funds that we get and the fact that we do have someone on staff that can provide those services, I think it's wise to not continue the contract with Brant Media. The other thing we looked at was the cable TV channel, Channel 182. And we do know fewer and fewer people are relying on Channel 182 or cable channels, and we have more and more people relying on social media. So we also put it out there. Earlier, we had contract or terminated the permit with Curry County Voices and had left it open to them that, hey, if you have any content you want to put on Channel 182, please get it to us, and we'll put it out there. We have not received anything from them to put out on there. So it's clear to me that we're not using Channel 182 the way to full capabilities there. So originally, I had proposed that we discontinue using Channel 182 as well as discontinue the, or not renew the contract with Brant Media. Brant Media did get ahold of me yesterday, and they said, "Hey, we have a proposal. We think we have a way to help you." Because the way it is right now, we can't just pick up 182 and run it ourselves. So that was why, which added to my decision to recommend that we not go with Channel 182. But Brant Media did get ahold of us yesterday, and they said, "Hey, we have a recommendation that may work for you." So what they did is they said they are willing to take the rest of the money that we have reserved for their contract and use it to help staff transition and get the approvals and the training and everything needed so that they can also connect to Channel 182. So what I did present to you, I put in your supplemental packet or emailed to you late last night, was another option, which is to not renew the contract with Brant Media when it expires on December 31st, that being because we do have staff that can help us with that. And again, that's nothing about Brant Media Services. They were great to work with. But then the revised one also does say that we would also continue with Channel 182, but Brant Media would help us through to the end of the year to get us transitioned and trained and everything we need so we can continue the 182 service. So my recommendation would be that we go with the second order that was presented to you last night, emailed to you. It was also on your door. I do have copies here in case anybody would want to read it. Basically, if you're okay with it, Mr. Chair, I'd like to just read it real quick.
Go ahead.
So the public is aware what that second one said. The first whereas was the same about the Communications Act. Second one is whereas the county receives money from Charter to provide PEG programming on Channel 182, as well as funds for equipment to film the programming and operate Channel 182. Whereas Curry County wishes to continue their PEG programming but can no longer contract for Brant Media Services. Whereas Brant Media has offered to train county staff on the transition from contracted cable cast to in-house cable cast. Whereas Brant Media, the current media provider, will train county staff at no cost beyond the existing budgeted amount contracted with Brant Media. Now therefore, it is hereby ordered as follows. The Curry County Board of Commissioners here in assembled order to not renew the contract with Brant Media and utilize existing monies budgeted for Brant Media to train county staff on the transition from contracted cable cast to an in-house cable cast. The board thanks Brant Media for their professional services, cooperative relationship, and offer for staff training. I also want to add that we have received a few comments on it. They were, I think people were under the misunderstanding. They were under the understanding that we were going to not do anything. Some of the comments I saw were that we were going to give all of the equipment back and not do anything. That was never our intent. Our original intent was, because we did not have the capability to broadcast to Channel 182, and we do see fewer people using cable TV, the intent was to continue to use the equipment but to broadcast it out through social media and other means such as videos, et cetera. But like I said, with the offer from Brant Media, we can continue with that channel, Channel 182. It just needs some training, no additional cost than what's budgeted with Brant Media right now. And just move forward.
All right, so I have a couple of public comments for this. I will say we are getting at the hour. We have a public hearing at 10:15. So we've only got about nine minutes left for that. Carl King?
Carl King, Naseka Road, Curry County Voices. We had not been informed of the new order. And in fact, no one talked to us about anything we happened to stumble across on Friday afternoon, information that this would be on your agenda today. On Monday morning, I submitted to Mr. Huddle, and he passed on to the Director of Operations a proposal whereby what we thought were your goals, which was to save money by terminating or not renewing Brant Media, that we at Curry County Voices would take on full responsibility at no cost to the county for Channel 182. If you look over what's been on your Channel 182 since you terminated us and look at what has been on our website since you terminated us, you will find that, yes, we haven't put anything on your channel because you insisted on censoring it, and we were not prepared to be censored. You have put on, other than your meetings and hearings at the State House and the State Legislature, three programs. You've put on two PSAs that Curry County Voices created in the past and something on ONC lands. You have not used it at all, except for to advertise yourselves. We have, in fact, done programs for you and put them on our website. We have on our website the workshop that was done at the library for Commissioner Boyce on your master plan at no cost to you. And again, think, you know, it was ridiculous to throw away Channel 182. You'll never get it back. These big cable companies and the FCC are working tirelessly to eliminate public access television and media in this country. I mentioned that to you the last time I spoke to you on this topic. But we are willing, and we remain willing, and we stand, and would love an opportunity to discuss how we can provide and keep on Channel 182 at no cost to you, your meetings, and put in all the other things we're doing. The Planning Commission hearings, the School Board meetings, the Health Network meetings, the City Council meetings, the Tuesday night talks at SWAC. We can do all of that at no expense. Just give us an opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. JJ?
Yeah.
Okay. Denise King?
Well, I think, well, Denise King, Naseka Road. I think Carl's pretty much said how we feel at Curry County Voices. But I think personally, to, I would hope you would keep the channel because potentially, it's a phenomenal avenue of communication for people in the county. To get rid of it smacks to me of wanting less information to go out, which is very upsetting to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Karen Hegelsson?
Good morning. I'm Karen Hegelsson from Rogue Hills, and I'm one of the people that creates lots of these programs. Kurt Boyce's wife spoke to me the other night when I was at the library filming the strategic planning meeting. And she said, "Karen, I noticed that most of these programs you've been doing." I did this with my own money. I bought my own computer. I paid for the production program that edits these programs. I did get the training from Brant Media, and the equipment is primarily from CCV. And Carl and Denise bought that equipment. But primarily, it's my time. I love doing it. I love this community. I have lots of people that ask me, probably because I'm in the Friends of the Library and the Zeroptomists, and, you know, I work for Wally's House. They come and they say, "Will you do a program for this? Will you, will it be seen on TV?" And I have to say, "Well, not anymore." I guess I didn't understand that duplication of services decision in the first place. So I think Curry County Voices is fully capable of doing this work, and we like doing it, and we don't want to be paid. We just want to be recognized and allow the time on public television for our programs to be seen.
Thank you. Nancy Sue Rose?
Nancy Sue Rose. I live in Naseka Beach. Well, I think that is good that you're considering not getting rid of the channel. Whoever runs it, I would still ask that Curry County Voices be allowed to put them on. If it's not popular anymore, it might be- If it's not popular anymore, it might be because things that used to be on there aren't on there. And so if you would consider Curry County Voices in helping with this, we would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to state for the record that I've never said that Curry County Voices couldn't add content to the channel. It was just supposed to go through Brant Media at the time and now it'll be, we'll have other people trained to do that. But Curry County Voices has never been denied to put content on that channel. With that being said, I would make a motion that we go with Ms. Schmelzer's second order that she brought to this board this morning, allowing the channel to continue and Brant Media to provide as the changes, basic changes to be that Brant Media will provide training with the existing budget through Brant Media.
I'm going to second that with an opportunity just to say something.
So we have a motion and a second. Comments?
Okay, the comment that I would like to make is this could be a win-win for both Curry County Voices and for the county. And I think we need to work more closely with Curry County Voices to allow them to get some of their programming on.
I agree with that.
Can I just add something, Sheriff? You know, Curry County Voices has been at meetings. They've been at meetings that I was a part of. They do a great job. It's really unfortunate they haven't submitted the material to go on Channel 182. I'm hoping moving forward that they do because they do provide a valuable service there.
I think that'd be great.
Further comment?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Boyce?
I just want to highlight the recognition of Brant Media. That's a commissioner not to leave a project that's been very good for the county. I know we're going to be able to save a little money and, but yet, helping this, and I just want to extend gratitude and appreciation for the work and certainly their willingness to transition this into the next stage of public television and what we have to do here. Thank you.
All right, roll please.
Mr. Gold?
Aye.
Vice Chair Boyce?
Yes?
Chair Pash?
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
All right, so at this time, we're going to recess this meeting. We have a public hearing to call to order. So we will come back into session on this meeting after the public hearing.
And don't try to be something that you're not. It's going to be hard. It's going to take a long time.
A de novo public hearing, and that is a hearing for board review. I'm sorry, Commissioner Boyce, are you on?
I am, Mr. Chair. Thank you. Good, this is my mayor. I've got a little bit of five minutes left here. I have a very important governor's fire council meeting. I hope you can have a little presentation, so forgive me how deep these are. I have a meeting at 1:00 and 3:00, so my timing should be fairly well to participate today. But I just have this 20 or 30 minutes. Thank you.
All right, so this is a de novo public hearing for board review, public comment, and board action on an appeal of a Planning Commission decision to deny the request for approval of a conditional use permit, AD 1907, for the mining and processing of aggregate along the Pistol River in the Forestry Grazing Zone District for Ronald Adams. A will be to identify the following, the land use hearing procedure specified in the county ordinance, Section 2.140. B will be to receive the planning director's staff report. C to accept testimony from the applicant and parties in favor of the app. D to accept testimony from other parties. E will be to allow parties to offer rebuttal evidence and testimony. F will be to conclude the hearings. Board to determine if the record is to be left open. G will be to deliberate on the application and if desired, request direct questions to staff. And H will be to discuss findings and direct staff to bring back a final order for the decision. Before we begin this hearing, I will ask if there are any one, is there anyone on this board or in this room that could have a conflict of interest with their decision?
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Commissioner Boyce?
Thank you again. I've known Ronald Adams my entire life. He's a veteran. He's a Vietnam veteran and he's a combat veteran. I hold him in very high regard. However, I will have no difficulty remaining non-biased in either direction and will support what is best for the citizens of Curry County. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Anything further? All right, so let's begin the hearing with Ms. Crockett.
Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Becky Crockett. I'm the Curry County Planning Director. I want to start these proceedings by describing the rules that govern a quasi-judicial proceeding. First, staff will give a report. The staff report will describe the criteria that an applicant must satisfy to receive approval. The board may ask questions of staff. Then the chair will open the hearing to the public. The applicant will be allowed to speak first and may ask for rebuttal time. After the applicant presents, any person may address the board. Any testimony, argument, or evidence that you give must relate to the criteria listed in the staff report or the Curry County zoning ordinance or the Curry County Comprehensive Plan or state or federal constitutions, statutes, rules, regulations, or planning goals that apply to the application. Before the hearing is closed, any participant may ask for an opportunity to present additional evidence, argument, or testimony regarding the application. If you ask for more time, the board will either continue the public hearing to a date certain or close the hearing and leave the record open for additional written evidence, argument, or testimony. Failure to raise an issue with specificity before the close of the record so that the board and any party can respond will prevent you from raising that issue on appeal. Failure to raise a constitutional issue with specificity will prevent you from bringing a court action for damages. With that, I'm going to proceed with the staff report. I want to be brief. Before I start, I do want to also recognize the applicant, Ron Adams, as a Vietnam vet with a Purple Heart and he's a lifetime resident of Pistol River. And it's been an honor to work with him. I also want to recognize the opponents of this application who have conducted themselves, I would say, in an extremely professional manner and have agreed to work with Mr. Adams in the future, depending on where this project goes. So with that, I want to talk about the application. I want to be brief. All of the information related to this application is in the record of more than 400 pages. And that's posted, I think most of that information is posted on the Board of Commissioners website at this point, and a lot of it is on the Planning Commission's website through the proceedings that the Planning Commission had. They heard this issue and discussed it at four separate meetings over the summer. The decision before the board today is to either reverse the Planning Commission denial of the Adams gravel extraction process, project, or to affirm the Planning Commission decision and deny the project moving forward. Ronald Adams requests the Curry County Board of Commissioners approve his application, it's AD 1907 for the record, to mine and process 10,000 cubic yards of aggregate from property zone forestry grazing adjacent to and within the banks of the Pistol River. Gravel mining and processing is allowed as a conditional use within this forestry grazing zone. The method of aggregate removal proposed is a process called scalping. Typically, this involves scalping gravel off the exposed gravel bar during low-flow conditions. The area proposed for gravel up the operation is a county-adopted Gulf Five resource. What that means is that the county has set policy in its comprehensive plan to protect these resources for utilization of them for gravel extraction to meet the needs of the county. It also has a long history of aggregate removal. Further, the site, excuse me, is within an area of estering influence and it does include fish species that are protected under the Endangered Species Act. I want to identify that while this is a de novo hearing and what that means is that the board is deciding the issue without reference to the conclusion of the Planning Commission's decision, but it's with the record of evidence that the Planning Commission looked at throughout their four-month process. The specific criteria that must be addressed and met by the board are primarily those in the Curry County zoning ordinance, and Nancy's going to put that up here, Section And these are addressed in detail in the August 8, 2019 staff report to the Planning I want to bring your attention to the specific criteria that must be approved or must be met to approve the gravel extraction on the Pistol River from this section. If we can roll to the top of those. There we go. Okay, so if you look at the top under 10A first, the code is very clear. It states that the applicant's plans and specifications must contain sufficient information to address the standards. The dilemma that we've had with this application is the information submitted by the applicant is primarily anecdotal and of the applicant's opinions. And while that's historically significant, there's no scientific data, studies, or technical information in the record to support the statements. Then if you look at the first few standards under this, under number 10A to be addressed by the applicant, it includes the impact of the gravel extraction operation on things like noise, dust, water quality, water flow, fish habitat, land stability, vegetation, wildlife habitat, and land and soil erosion. Essentially, these are the environmental impacts that you would expect from the operation. The dilemma that we have here today is Mr. Adams' proposal doesn't tell us where on the several acres of gravel bar the operation will take place, nor does it specify any details regarding the operation except that it's going to be a scalping operation. There's no information on scalping depth, length, location, equipment to be used, trucks involved, stockpiling, water diversion, berming, timing in regards to fish migration, flow impacts, vegetation removal, access, or road construction. 10,000 cubic yards, just for a point of reference, is about 1,000 dump truck full of gravel. It could be a fairly significant impact depending on where it's located. The other issue that is fairly significant with a gravel extraction operation on the Pistol River, and this has been a big omission from the application, is that there is a serious lack of coordination with the requirements and staff at the numerous federal and state agencies that have jurisdiction over this kind of operation. Gravel extraction in a place like the Pistol River requires permits and oversight and regulatory authority from the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, the National Marine Fisheries Service, U.S. Fish and Wildlife, the Bureau of Indian Affairs, Department of Environmental Quality, Department of Geology and Mineral Industries, the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife, the Division of State Lands, and the State Historic Preservation Office. Now, coordination and regulatory compliance with the technical staff in these agencies can provide the environmental data to satisfy the code criteria, but there's been little or no coordination by the applicant with these agencies. In conclusion, there simply is not enough information from the applicant to determine if the code criteria that we just looked at can be met. And I want to read into the record of the hearing before the board, the staff recommendation from the August 8, 2019 Planning Commission staff report. "In order to determine if this proposed project is in compliance with the provisions of the Curry County Comprehensive Plan and the Curry County zoning ordinance, the findings set forth must be addressed and met with a level of confidence that the potentially significant environmental issues associated with the project can be mitigated. This will require the reliance of technical staff from multiple federal and state agencies in coordination with county staff addressing the issues." The fundamental concern that is apparent with the application is that it lacks detail on what the operation entails. And there's been little or no coordination and discussion regarding the multiple federal and state agencies that need to be involved in gaining permit compliance with the currently undefined operation. The situation requires staff to make an assumption that the multiple federal and state agencies will work with the applicant and do their due diligence in addressing the environmental issues to the satisfaction of meeting the county requirements and satisfy the findings. Land use decisions need to be based on evidence in the record, not assumptions. We've received several public comments on this application in the last couple of days. I believe those were posted on your website or given to you this morning. I do want to state in regards to those submittals that came in, most all of them pertain to the issue of not enough information to evaluate the application, therefore it should not be approved. However, there is one specific comment made by the Oregon Shores Coalition that I need to bring to your attention. The Oregon Shores Coalition is requesting the hearing be continued for seven days and that the record be left open for 14 days. And I believe that's a legal requirement on the board to accept those suggestions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Is this a situation where if there is the request made to keep the record open, we have to keep it open?
Yes.
We don't have an option, correct?
Right, that's the Chapter 197 in the state. So land use procedures are regulated heavily by the state, and so it's a kind of a top-down rule there. Which basically means we cannot reach a final decision today.
So we, I guess we're on to C. Accept testimony from the applicant and parties in favor. Mr. Adams?
Good morning, sir. Good morning.
If you wouldn't mind just pull that one microphone up a little bit to you, that'd be great. Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Thank you for your service as well.
Thank you. This is almost humorous to me, the way this has gone about. And I believe this should have been approved outright, should never have gone before the board. And the reason being behind that is that we have all these other agencies. The idea that these other agencies won't work with an applicant, I mean, that has to be laughable. These agencies, whether it's Army Corps of Engineers or the Division of State Lands, they want to be involved in this. They know what's going on down here at Pistol River, but they can't get involved in it. I just happened to run across this little pamphlet from the Forest Service, Stream Care, and it brings in up the issues about why we should care about our streams. And it goes into the thing about what happens to the fish and things. Well, has anybody here been down on the Pistol River to see what the fish are having to deal with now? They need to turn their TV sets off and realize that that river is a living river and it needs to be maintained. I mean, it needs, man has screwed up everything down there and they want nature to correct all this stuff. Well, nature isn't going to correct it. Man has to do something there. I wrote another page and I went off and forgot it at home. I was going to read it at the last, my last statement, but I'm going to bring it up here in the beginning of this statement. We have rules of engagement. These rules of engagement, contrary to John Huddle there, are what we require. Two years ago, I was in the hospital and the road washed out down there. They hadn't come before the county and asked for permission to repair the road down there. They went- They went on my property and fixed the road, and since then, everything that they did pretty much had been washed right out in the middle of the river, which had made it worse and caused more damage to the Pistol River. I didn't hear anybody screaming about the state fixing the road, and we have a project down there in Huskenagon, and within the next 12 months, they're going to fix that road. There are going to be trucks on that road 24 hours a day, seven days a week hauling rock, and they're going to, where are they going to be hauling that rock from? They're either going to be hauling it through Gold Beach, or down Hunters Creek, or through Brookings, unless they get it off the Pistol River. The Pistol River is three miles from this project. They're going to close 101 Highway. The people that are concerned about being disturbed by the removal of that rock, they're going to be really disturbed because 101 Highway is going to be closed, and my understanding, Tidewater bought the old gadget mill there, and I'm assuming they're going to use that as a staging ground. But anyway, we're back to the rules of engagement. Everything is going to be suspended until they fix that highway down there. Simple as that. But anyway, I want to read, I bought this property and I could not believe that all these agencies are not involved in this, trying to do something with it. So I decided to do something with it, and I've got all these organizations saying, oh, no, no, you can't violate these codes. Well, all the codes are being violated by doing nothing. So I came up with a plan to fix the escuary, and everybody brings up, well, you're working in the escuary. That's an outright lie. None of this is in the escuary. But everything that I do will repair, help to repair the escuary. And I want to read into the record my plan. I have a plan to help the Pistol River Escuary and repair the salmon habitat. Presently... Presently, there is a surplus of sediment composed of sand, gravel, and river-bottom soil, which is causing the river to leave its bed and erode the river bottom away. This is causing the river to widen out and causing temperatures rises. Algae growth and shallow ponding, which allows the young salmon to become landlocked, diseased, and numerous problems. If these goals are met, this would be enough, but it will accomplish so much more if we could remove the surplus sediment and construct more of the structures that have already been built along the crook property. It will go a long ways to lower the water temperatures. The structures that have been built are working wonderfully. They are blowing the sand and gravel up out of the river, deepening the channel, causing a defined stream bed. They are also helping to clean the gravel so that the water will run through it and not over it, which is causing the water to warm up beyond what is a survival temperature for young salmon. This summer, the mouth of Pistol River stayed open all summer despite the low rainfall. The water could not flow through the sand due to excess sediment. The gravel opposite these structures is being washed up two to three feet higher than the existing bottom land, which is great, but the gravel isn't, but if the gravel isn't removed to alleviate the pressure on these structures during high water, they will eventually wash out. These structures are too valuable and important not to be maintained. I want to be clear, this plan is to improve the escuary, but not any of the work or any sediment removed will take place in the escuary. We need to build more of these structures on the south side of the river and then switch over to the north side of the river and build some along the north side to approximately a quarter mile from the bridge so that we can keep a deepened channel going clear to the bridge. And I've talked to the Army Corps of Engineers and the Division of State Lands. Army Corps of Engineers have come up with these structures, and the Division of State Lands, the only concern they have with these is that they're, get too down, too low down to where the tide water is pushing back against them because you need the hydraulics of the river to make them work. We have some serious problems on the river to deal with. Not only is the fish habitat in a state of emergency, but the bridge also is in a state of emergency. These structures will not only help with these serious problems. If they are constructed properly and installed in time, they will help many, in many other ways. The Carpenterville Road is also very close to a state of emergency. Again, installing these structures, if done properly and in time, will be a viable solution to that, too. The Carpenterville Road was washed, almost washed out two years ago, and it's almost ready to be washed out again. The 101 Highway is also in a state of emergency, and it's only three miles from this area. Removing the sediment from Pistol River at this time will not only solve a lot of problems here, but it will solve major traffic problems associated with all the truck traffic with having to haul rock through congested areas. It will also shorten the time needed to do these repairs. My plan for removing this sediment is as follows. I have marked out four areas on special maps showing the specific areas and sizes and the depth of the sediment that needs to be removed to enable the hydraulics of the river to work, to enable the river to function like a normal river that has not been inundated by refuge from man-caused upstream activities. This debris is causing many problems in the river, such as warming the water, widening of the river, slowing the stream flow, stream bank erosion, damage to the bridge, filling out, or filling up of the escuary, and now it appears to keep the mouth of the river open during the summer months. It is important that the mouth of the river is closed during the summer months to keep salmon from entering the river before the river has enough water flow to enable them to survive. And I talked to the Division of State Lands about this, and they're in agreement with me that the reason the mouth is not closing is because the sand is getting so filled up with sediment that the water cannot run through it. And also a major concern is approximately 1,500 feet upriver from the escuary is a large quantity of rock, large rocks, coming down the river. If these rocks make it past the bridge and make it into the escuary, they will fill the escuary up, and it will be decades before the river will be able to correct this. This is all man-caused, and the river needs help to correct the damage caused by road building, logging, and fire. There is so much excess sediment in the river now that the river flow is slowed down. The normal transport of sediment is not allowed to happen, which stops the river from transporting sediment down the river and out into the ocean. Once the river is free of this excess amount of sediment, the river will flow faster, and that will initiate the natural and normal transport of sediment. And there's an enormous amount of sediment up the river. If we remove the sediment that's in there now, and I used to do this at Hunters Creek, I'd take the gravel out of there in March, and in April, you wouldn't know that the gravel had ever been removed. And the Pistol River has so much sediment up there that as soon as we take it out, it'll be replaced with the next, that's assuming we're going to ever get any more rain. But right now, ODOT has a huge need for this material that is causing most of the problems in the river. If we are able to go ahead and use the material for repairs to 101, we may be able to accomplish my goals in a couple of years because of the demand for gravel right now. What would normally take decades to do, we may be able to accomplish in a couple of years. My plan is to remove the material from these four areas down to a depth which will be approximately two feet above the normal water level of the river, which will allow the normal hydraulics to work. The total amount of debris to be removed from these four areas will total approximately 8,000 to 10,000 cubic yards. If it were removed all in one year, we acknowledge that the likelihood of that happening, which would be the ideal plan, is very unlikely. The sediment that we are planning to remove has been deposited here in the last three to four years. Most of the places where I'm talking about removing this gravel, four years ago, was river bottom. Now it's all gone, but it's replaced, I mean, not all of it's gone, there's considerably more that's going to be washed out, too, but where that river bottom's been washed away, it's filled back up with gravel. There will not be any contact with the waters of Pistol River while removing any sediment. This will be replaced almost immediately by the abnormal transport of material that is upstream. That is why it's so important to install these structures. And I have attached copies of how you, what these structures look like.
Could you hold on a second, Mr. Adams?
Immediately or as soon as practical. Specific placement and number of structures to be determined by coordinating with Bob Land Lobdell and Tyler Krug, Division of State Lands and Army Corps. We are acknowledging that more sediment will keep coming.
Commissioner Boyce?
Thanks, Chair. I'm going to sign off here. I'll be back as quick as I can. Thank you.
Thank you.
But by putting these structures in, they will help to keep the stream flow open. This is not the final solution. This is a working plan and will only be as good as incentives to keep this a viable river. Once these structures are in place, we shouldn't not have to go back to the river flow area. We should be able to keep the Pistol River a healthy river by removing sediment from the floodplain, which will be up and out of the normal waterway. These structures, they push that gravel right up and out of the waterway. Specific plans on how the sediment will be removed will depend on whether or not we will be allowed to supply material for Highway 101 repairs and/or to the county road department. And I don't have a letter from the roadmaster because of problems with my email and stuff, but I talked to Richard Christensen, the roadmaster, and he's 100% behind this. This will save the county tens of thousands of dollars. Right now, everything that's done down in that area has to be trucked in from the Rogue River. And Pistol River, that was one of the, I think it was seven gold spots in the county when they come up with the comprehensive plan. It's one of the valuable assets. They call them gold spots. I don't know a whole lot about this, but from what I understand, these gold spots are the valuable things of the county, and that's one of the valuable things of the county. It's no wonder the county's bankrupt when we're transporting gravel an extra 30 miles when we have it right there. We are not a gravel company, though we do own some heavy equipment. We're not able to follow through with these plans without the opportunity to supply material to ODOT and/or the road department. We're a small profit-for-purpose LLC doing business under the name Pistol River Enterprises LLC. It's a minority-owned business. Sole owners are my wife, Jerry Lee, Adams, and myself, who is a disabled combat marine. We do own most all of the property within 500 feet of all areas where work will be done. The actual equipment used in the operation will be dump trucks and loaders, which will be owned by private contractors. Any other equipment will more than likely, for short periods, be portable rock crushers. All material and equipment will be stored and stockpiled up and away from the river on the north side of my property. This is not to say that if we are not able to find a market for this material, that none of these plans will take place, but rather stating the facts that even if we were financially able to pay to restore the river, the government involvement makes it almost impossible or impractical to do this without the use of grants and other sources of financing. Having a market for this material is more of a time factor. If this is delayed, the cost of damage to the bridge, Carpenterville Road, and other things will be a loss to all of us. I'd just like to add, you know, it's easy to say that you can't do this without these, following all these guidelines and things, but we have rules of engagement. And when the county needs rock, they're going to go get the rock, and these same people that are trying to interfere with the normal process here are going to be the first ones on the phone calling you up and saying that they want the road repaired. And in New York, you hear on the news, they go down the street and it's manhole covers. And I always wondered, why in the hell would they put manhole covers up? Well, it's because they don't have any gravel. Is that what the county's going to do next, is start putting manhole covers over? Because that's the alternative. And I have packets of additional information that I had copied, yeah, for the commissioners and everybody.
Thank you.
I covered a lot of material there, so I'm trying to get one. Anyway, I did bring additional maps if anybody's interested in looking at them, but I do have attached maps and information there, but it's just interesting to me that these simple pamphlets... that these simple pamphlets say more than all of these organizations could ever address.
Do we have a copy of that pamphlet with this material?
No, I don't.
I think we could probably make a copy of that. Are you at, I think having that in the materials would be helpful.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Okay, well, thank you.
Nancy, can you make a copy of that and give Mr. Adams back his original?
So are there any other, any more testimony from parties in favor of this application present? Step up, please. You have to stay, you have to stand in front of the mic and address who you are, please.
I'm Jerry Lee Adams, Ron's wife.
Okay.
A couple of points that I thought he made were really good as far as it isn't in the estuary. We kept hearing about how it was. It isn't. Another thing is, I do appreciate my neighbors giving me all the property that the river's washing over to us. But the whole thing is, is we're trying to save their property. We're trying to save their homes. There's a lot of people that didn't show up because they're so upset that nothing ever gets done, that have lost acres and acres of land. In fact, their house is threatened. We love Pistol River. We love our community. And we're trying to save it. We also have an inn three miles up the river, on the river. It's called the Fish Inn, but there's no fish in there. And that's due to what's happening down at the mouth. So we need, it's important to us to have a good quality river with fish in it. Ron doesn't tell you enough about how much he has been in contact with the different organizations and how we've been sent letters but haven't been able to print them out. But he has been working close with them. And we have had a lot of support from the Army of Engineers, Engineer Corps, the road master, the Fish and Wild, Fish and Wild game. A lot of those people not only call us quite a bit, but Ron's down there talking to them. So it's not just input out of his head that's going on. He's got information from all these different organizations. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, last call. Anyone else testimony from parties in favor of the application? Okay, that part of the testimony is closed. We will now accept testimony from other parties. Sir, anyone that steps up to the microphone, please identify yourself, where you live, and any organization that you may be involved with.
My name is Marty Van Otterloo. I'm a Pistol River resident, 24506 Pistol River Loop. I live on the hill just by this. I would, my lane takes off right by the old Pistol River Bridge. And so I would be passing any gravel operation every day, going back and forth to my house. My house would be about a quarter mile away from this. So we're one of the closest residents. What, I don't have a problem with someone saying, "We're going to restore the river." I applaud anybody who wants to do that. But the very first time that we got this application, it was gravel mining. There was nothing said about restoration. This is the first time that Mr. Adams has mentioned that structures. I don't know what kind of structure he's talking about. I've seen other river restoration projects where they have identified structures and they've put in structures and they've helped the fisheries. But again, there is a kind of, a kind of a, an assumption that everybody knows what a structure is. No, that's not good enough for the scientists and for all the other things. We've also been told that there's a history of gravel extraction. Yes, there has been, but it's been a long time ago, okay? When they built the 101 Highway in 1960. That was probably the last real serious gravel extraction. The last time a gravel extraction was tried in the Pistol River was about 10 years ago. And there was going to be an asphalt plant in about the same location. This was, huh? Well, just, just.
Please, I'd ask everyone in the audience to please hold your comments. And if you'd like to make a comment later, you could step up to the microphone. But please don't interrupt the speaker.
Okay, from what I'm, what I'm saying is, at that particular time, on this property, there was a number of agencies who basically declined any approval for gravel extraction right then and there. And so I had thought that anybody who is, who knows that history, especially a long-term resident of this county, would know that there is a number of hurdles environmentally or water quality that they have to meet before they put an application forward. So an application without that background basically wastes everybody's time. And that's, that's what I am feeling it's wasting time. I'm glad to be a participant of any restoration project. But this was not an application for a restoration project. It doesn't say, "Application to restore the river." It says, "Application to remove gravel." That's what it says, okay? Now, other people say, "Oh, well, geez, you know, I've lost land because the river hydraulics have changed the last two years." And Ron has got pictures showing the different things, some satellite shots showing that the river is eating his banks. But if you took pictures or if you looked at pictures 50 years ago or 60 years ago, the river ran completely different, okay? It's a floodplain. Anybody who knows that area knows it's a floodplain. The river is going to do what it does. And yes, we can try channeling it. But if we really try channeling it, that's not good for the fisheries either, okay? It just blows all the smolts and everybody downstream and out into the ocean when they're not ready. So all I'm saying is, we need more information. We need some concrete evidence from the other agencies that they've worked with Ron and that they're willing to support his project. If we don't have that, then this is a nonstarter for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor? Or I'm sorry, opposed?
Do I need to bring this microphone down?
Yes, please.
Okay. So my name is Eleanor Foskett. I live at 24299 Carpenterville Road. And I am speaking today as an affected residence, but also as a community member of the Pistol River. And I'm not representing the community, but I am a community member there. I clearly recognize that repair and restoration on the river is badly needed. On a personal side, approval and permitting of the proposed project brought forth by Ron Adams would occur approximately 600 feet from my residence. Without a clearly defined plan of operation, and that's only one site because I heard him talk today about multiple sites in the river. So it could be much closer, okay? Because we don't have clarity on where he's actually going to operate. So from my residence, "Without a clearly defined plan of operation, including data that indicates our home, the river, surrounding areas, and the ecosystem would not be adversely affected by his gravel removal and processing, I cannot support this activity. Based on the overall conditions of the Pistol River and the vast amount of area covers, I can say with confidence that his operation, as it was stated in the last meeting on one bar only, is minimal and will not make any significant or lasting changes to address the severe bank erosion, channel dimensions, potential flooding, gravel and sediment buildup, and other issues." I also wanted to address his comment regarding the bridge. This is something that he keeps bringing up regarding the bridge. In a recent meeting, which Ron scheduled, the road master came to that meeting. This was discussed. And at that meeting, the road master said, "There, this is not a critical issue with the bridge. The bridge is not going to fall down. You are not going to lose the bridge. There are issues with scouring in the bridge. The bridge also calls, causes pinching off of the river because it was placed in the wrong way and so forth. Some of the structures block movement of the water through there. But that was discussed at that meeting. Yes, it could be replaced, but it's not on the priority list to be replaced. So we move forward with that. As a member of the community, I have stepped forward to build a ground swell of concern and recognition to the community of Pistol River. Yes, we have people that are stepping back because they've tried in the past to do things. But I wanted to make an effort to try to move the community together to address these issues. On November 14th, I sponsored a community event to provide opportunities for our residents to meet and learn from what some of the local organizations can provide and how they have been successful in repairing and restoring other rivers in other communities. Approximately 65 individuals attended. This was a starting point to build on. Approximate, let's, many, a starting point to build on. There are many other agencies and organizations that we need to have in our network if we are to succeed. An important part of this meeting was allowing the residents to question and interact with the various presenters. Mark Sherwood, a local resident and the executive director of Native Fish Society, presented an example of a river restoration he had worked on to encourage the community to begin working together. Drew Harper, a Riparian Restoration Coordinator of Curry County Soil and Water Conservation District, discussed an ongoing project to complete a study and create modeling programs to aid and understand the effects of changes and repairs made to the river, which will aid in future planning of projects. These are the kind of activities and projects that are needed for the Pistol River. If I had to state the most important learning of the, of the event on November 14th, it would be that there are agencies and organizations out there who are willing to work with residents and the community. But it will take the cooperation of the landowners and residents for them to engage. Their charters require that the landowners reach out with their problems and issues. They cannot act without engagement. Ron Adams has reached out and taken the help. Ron Adams has not reached out and taken the help offered when approached months ago. If he had, we may not be here today and his project would possibly have moved forward. Let's see. I think that's pretty much it for now.
Thank you.
So thank you.
Good morning, commissioners.
Morning.
My name is Ann Velisis, and I represent the Calmeopsis Audubon Society. I'm the president. Our, our organization has hundreds of members in Curry County, including members in the Pistol River area who are concerned about habitat for birds, fish, and wildlife. And so we appreciate the opportunity to participate in this public hearing. We agree with the unanimous decision of the Planning Commission to deny Mr. Adams' proposal because he did not provide enough information required by law to make a proper decision. Most proposals of this kind include engineering drawings, at the very least, and the specific amount of gravel to be removed. And as we've heard today, was the first time we heard, there were four sites. And this map, I think, came up recently that shows one site. So there's been a lot of, there's been a lack of clarity, I would say, about what the information is. But it has not been adequate. As one Planning Commission member stated in the transcript, which you can read.
If I could.
Counsel?
You were instructed, and I'm sorry, thanks. But she started out her comment saying that she agrees with the decision of the Planning Commission. You heard Director Crockett at the beginning of this. This is a de novo hearing, and you are not to consider the decision of the Planning Commission. You're to make your own decision. So I just want to counsel the Board of Commissioners, as well as the Speaker, on the standards for the decision-making here that were, you know, discussed by Director Crockett at the very beginning of this proceeding.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Huddle.
Sure.
So I would just amend that to say, it is our concern that there not enough information has been presented that's specific, that addresses concerns in this application. And that usually these applications, which we've reviewed in the past, the Planning Commission, include engineering drawings and things to that effect. And anyway, as one planning, well, so I can't mention what was stated at all by the Planning Commission. Okay, got it. So because the proposed gravel removal site is in a very sensitive area, ahead of the estuary, Mrs. Adams was suggesting it's not in the estuary. It's been unclear because the property does reach down into the estuary, where in the area it is. But it is right in the area of estuary influence. It's a very sensitive area for many different reasons. And so it requires careful consideration, especially for salmon. It demands some technical expertise, frankly. Through the public process and the comment periods, we've highlighted concerns that need to be addressed. And we've strongly encouraged Mr. Adams to work with ODFW and perhaps a professional consultant to address these concerns and develop a more thorough plan. I had the opportunity to attend the recent meeting that Ms. Foskett arranged. And I was really grateful and happy that Mr. Adams publicly stated his intent was for restoring the Lower River and for salmon. I really appreciate, respect, and strongly support that, that vision. But the fact remains that the actual proposal, the application put forth, does not actually reflect this. At that same community meeting, I was really glad to learn that the South Coast Water, Soil and Water Conservation District and Curry Watershed Partnership has already started to work in the Lower Pistol River with interested landowners to address some of the issues related to sedimentation and fishery values that all of us really cherish very deeply. From that, from participating in that, I got the sense that the Soil and Water Conservation District and Curry Watershed Partnerships with its Technical Assistance Program for Landowners is a local organization that can actually really help with this situation in the Lower Pistol River. In fact, the organization has been recently selected for an Oregon Department of Agriculture Strategic Investment Program to implement projects to improve water quality and fish habitat on ag lands in the Pistol River estuary. So the timing is really right for collaboration. It's important to note that Mr. Drew Harper of the Soil and Conservation District stated that there is a need for a geomorphological study so that there is a better understanding of what is truly happening with sediment transport in the Lower River. He underscored that there's not sufficient information at the time, which was my understanding also from, from other stuff that I've, other people I've talked to and about this. The very good news is that his organization has already put in a grant proposal to study this. And so it's already in the, in the hopper, so to speak, and could be completed next year and could serve to inform restoration efforts in the Lower River, which that organization is working on, and also help with Mr. Adams' proposal, possibly. Through his stated commitment to restoring the Pistol River and his property ownership, Mr. Adams is now in a position to make a very important difference for the future. But he needs to tap the expertise of people who work in the field of river and estuary restoration to make sure that the actions taken at this sensitive place will be positive and not damaging. We agree with Mr. Adams' statement that the true gold and one of our greatest values in Curry County is our fish. And we very much appreciate his stated intent to restore the Lower Pistol. I just wish the plan he had submitted matched these words. But at this point, it still does not. So I would urge the Curry County Commissioners to encourage Mr. Adams both to withdraw his appeal and to work together with the Soil and Water Conservation District and ODFW to develop a more thorough plan. That is truly the most promising path to an outcome that I think everybody in the community and the public agencies that are going to have to make the decisions about this could support. Perhaps the commission members and the members of the community could work together to help support these kinds of grants to make sure that they happen soon. And I think many people in the community would help with that. It'd be far better to spend the time, money, county resources, and community energy in a direction of developing a positive restoration plan for Pistol River than to go down a wasteful path of haggling over an inadequate proposal that clearly does not path of haggling over an inadequate proposal that clearly does not still meet the requirements of the law. Thank you for considering our time and for your public service.
Thank you. All right, we have any, anything more to be added?
Good morning. Maybe I'll move this up slightly. Good morning, thank you. My name is Mark Sherwood. Thank you for the opportunity to speak at this public hearing. I am the executive director of the Native Fish Society. We are an Oregon-based conservation nonprofit. We exist to cultivate a ground swell of public support to revive abundant wild fish, free-flowing rivers, and thriving local communities. On top of my professional work with Native Fish Society, I am also a resident of Pistol River. I live at two-four-nine-nine-one Pistol River Loop. And I goes out saying, "I love this river, I love its fish, I love the community I live in." I greatly appreciate some of the comments before, and I've also had many opportunities to interact with Mr. Adams and have appreciated our interactions and appreciate his sentiment and desire to want to restore the river. Ultimately, though, the, the plan that's before you today is one to extract gravel, and instead of taking up additional time, I just would say that I agree with the previous speaker that this particular plan does not match that intention. And likewise, we don't believe that it has the specificity required under the Curry County zoning ordinances in order for the county to say, "Yes, we sufficiently understand that all these values are being protected, fish, water quality, habitat, and so on." But I did want to just spend one more moment because I don't think we've had too much discussion of, of the estuary issue. A little bit, we've kind of, kind of gone around it, but I want to talk about why estuaries are so important, why they're important to the county, why they're important to its citizens. First, is this in the estuary? The Department of State Lands uses the head of Kings, so on our biggest tides, the furthest end that the sea goes is all considered the estuary, under estuarine influence. And that would actually go here to the head to where, on this map, it says Fish Hatchery, at mile one-point-four.
I have a problem with that right there.
Okay. You'll, sir, you'll get a chance to rebut in, in a few minutes, okay? So, let each person have their testimony, and then you'll have a chance for rebuttal.
So, so my understanding, and I confirmed this with our local district fish biologist, Steve Major, I also included his response to this question about, "Is this area in estuarine influence?" in the record. So, it is there, present for you, for your review. Estuaries are the nurseries of the sea. They are incredibly important habitats. The fish in Pistol River, the native fish in Pistol River include Chinook salmon, Coho salmon, winter steelhead, cutthroat trout, you probably are all familiar, maybe you fish. All of those fish that are successful use the estuary twice in their lives. It's like some of the only habitat in the entire basin that is used twice. And so, that's why there's so much concern, there's so much detail and evidence required anytime we go into an estuary and, and change this place. Sadly, these habitats are among the most impacted. A recent study came out, which I also included in the record, that shows that between Oregon, Washington, and California, eighty-five percent of estuarine habitats are gone. No longer exist. It's a huge part of the reason why we don't have the abundant wild fish that we had at one time, and it's a, it's a reason why, you know, for me, like, this, this is an area that needs to be carefully stewarded by the community. In closing, again, I'd like to thank you all for the opportunity to speak and give my testimony. I would urge you the same way to, 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 to work with the applicant, maybe to consider a withdrawal, to encourage him to work with the Soil and Water Conservation District. I have pledged my support since day one back in June to help Mr. Adams and any other landowners in the area to accelerate efforts to do conservation or restoration work in the estuary. My organization has done that in other places. Of course, I would love to do more of that here at home. But it is, you know, since this is private land, it does take cooperation with private landowners in, in order for those things to happen. If the application is not withdrawn, I do request and urge the Commissioners to deny the appeal for the conditional use permit.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Any further comments? All right, so at this time, I'm going to close testimony.
Going to do rebuttal?
Just one second.
Well, I, you, never mind.
Can I finish my sentence, sir? I'm going to close testimony from other parties and offer now rebuttal evidence and testimony from anyone that wishes to come up.
I apologize, Mr. Chair.
Not, not a problem, sir. They're buying lunch.
I got some of the testimony. You know, one of the things that we've forgotten here is this, which I want to mention here because it's going to happen again, is this offshore fishing. Back in nineteen ninety was the last good year we had abundance of fish, and I would call the Coast Guard every night over the fishing fleets that would come in, and no one, no one would support me on seeing who those ships belonged to, and those ships would disappear every morning when the sun came up. But anyway, the next thing is the esquary. They can argue all day about the esquary, but the law is esquary and is below my property. And, um, just back to the rules of engagement, are we going to wait until we're putting manhole covers over jackholes before we take action on this? They want to keep putting this thing off. This is an opportunity right now to, to get rid of this sediment that, and whether they like it or not, there's, the action's going to be there, whether they're taking it out, the activities are going to be there, whether they take it out of the Pistol River or somewhere else. That Carpenterville Road's going to be closed, whether it washes out, I mean, it's going to be open because they're going to have to close the one-on-one highway to, to do the work. So, the inconvenience is, is going to be there. And their testimony about, yeah, the esquary, esquaries in most areas, and just like Pistol River, hasn't operated as an esquary in well excess of twenty years, is never going to operate if somebody doesn't take action now because if these larger rocks get down that esquary, the only way you'd ever get them out of there is go in there and dredge them out. And the stuff that's in there now, hopefully, if we do what I'm proposing, it will help to wash that sediment out of there. Oh, the other thing is, as a landowner, I, I'm trying to get something done, and I'm continually punished over this thing. It's cost me over four thousand dollars in fees on this, and, and people talk about, "I need to back off." I'm not going to back off whether this is approved or not. I'm going to try to get this river fixed. But as far as the fees go, I'd like to ask the Commissioners to allow those fees that I've paid to be used as a tax credit against my property taxes. I, like I say, I've paid over four thousand dollars for it, and in a few days, the new tax things are going to come out, and I'm going to be hit with over ten thousand dollars more in property tax. I don't think that I need to be punished for trying to correct something that's, that these agencies should have gone forward with. And the other thing I want to make clear is these agencies like Fish and Wildlife, Army Corps, and Division of State Lands, they're waiting for you guys to, to pass this, to approve this, and they told me before I ever went before the Planning Board to go in there and tell them, "You talked to us," and to go ahead and pass it so we can do something. And then they say, "Well, those people won't work with me." Yeah, well, if they won't work with me, then why do we have them?
Thank you, sir.
And thank you, you guys.
Counsel, before I close this or conclude the hearing, I'd like to ask, oh, you had, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I just want to address a concern that we did overlook and that Marty brought out. And the structures that Ron talks about are in the river now, and they're working. And we kind of assumed that Pistol River people that see it every day would know it was there. And that's where the fish hatchery was. So, you might want to take a look at that and see how it's working. It's not pie in the sky, "Oh, I think this might work." It's working. It just needs to have more of them.
Okay.
And as far as maps go, I think he's included maps for you.
Okay.
So, that might be something that you guys want to see, that it is a different packet than was before. However, this is a totally different hearing.
All right, thank you. We, we cannot accept any new testimony. I have to, ma'am, I have to follow this, so please, I'm sorry.
If I could, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Because the record is left open, written comments are going to be allowed to be submitted.
Correct. Yes.
Just thought I'd help out there if I could.
I just, I'm sorry, I have to follow this. Not trying to be difficult. But what I wanted to ask from counsel before we conclude the hearing is, I'm sure we're, we're going to have some comments for Mr. Adams. Should we do our comments to Mr. Adams, then conclude, or conclude the hearing first?
So, um, the hearing is to take testimony. If you're going to give comments, you wouldn't be needing to take any more testimony, but if you give comments now, it may give the public time to submit, you know, additional written comments in the fourteen-day window. And usually what happens is, if I could, the fourteen-day window that was requested in writing, we are required to grant. And I would also ask the Director, does our code say we grant twenty-one or? Fourteen, thank you, okay. So, so anyway, the, we're required to leave the record open. We, we stop taking of the testimony, we leave the record open for additional comments, and then the applicant actually has time after that to respond to those comments. If the applicant makes any new evidence, then the public or anyone else gets a chance to respond to new evidence. The idea is to limit down new evidence coming into the record. Regardless, in the open period, anything can come in. So, with that, if you give comments, that may help inform people of what you're looking for. So, you're allowed to give comments.
Mr. Adams, I would like to make a couple of comments to you. As a landowner, I'm facing very much the same situations you are with the loss of property and those kind of things. I have been working pretty much all summer on similar issues in the Rogue River and the Chetco River down in South County, and the inordinate amount of rock that has come down this river, not only from some of the dam removals, but from the failures in the fires that we've had and the amount of erosion that is now occurring because of the loss of ground cover. However, I would respectfully ask you, if you would, to possibly step back just a little bit and take a look at answering some of the public's questions. You know, I see here a defined map, but not a well-defined map. Okay. What I, what I may suggest is, and you may have done, is a GIS map and actually mark it out on that GIS map exactly where you intend and the amount of intrusion that you intend to do in that area. I understand, because I've done a lot of what you do, ten thousand, ten thousand loads of rock, or, I'm sorry, a thousand loads of rock is not a lot of rock because I believe, as you do, that in the spring, that rock will probably be right back, as it is on my property. We've had scientists on the Rogue River come down and look at this river that have looked at this river for a half a century and said that there is a cork in the end of the Rogue River that needs to be removed. However, it has to be removed responsibly. So, all I would ask you to do is, is possibly get a hold of, you know, some of, some fish people as we are looking at, we just had a meeting in, in Grants Pass a few weeks ago to discuss with the Corps, to discuss with ODFW and the Guides Union and some of those people that have a lot of experience in, in the rivers, to just get opinions from them on how to form this properly, or not, I don't want to say the word "properly," but, but in a way that would be more palatable for the people around you. But I, I, I agree with you that we have some rock that needs to be removed. However, it has to be done thoughtfully and mindfully for not only your neighbors, but for the fish habitat and the habitat around you. Commissioner Gold?
In looking at kind of the big picture, here's what I'm seeing. The application needs to be more specific, and another thing you mentioned was contacting some of these agencies. I would suggest that you get some written notifications from those agencies about, you know, what they said, because that would be helpful in. Okay. But just more specificity would really help in your process, and I agree that a lot of the rock has to go, but I agree with Mr. Posh that it has to be done responsibly and, so that the environment is not.
You have to step back up. Yeah. All, all I want to say is, is that I think you have support in your community. If it's done properly, I think a lot of your community will support it, as, as I do hear, support from some of the other fishing organizations and, and those kind of groups. So, again, I would ask you, maybe you would like to temporarily withdraw your application until you get those things in place, rather than try and force something through. I think a little bit of time on this could be to your benefit and could maybe start to form some friendships with some people that you unknow, you know, that you don't realize want to be your friend if they have more information. Yes, sir.
From, from the beginning, I've offered to take people out and show them that. I've never had anyone, I've even made phone calls and asked them to go, and, and I've never had anyone go there. If they go there, they trespass, or rather trespass than go there with me, but I've never refused to, to show. In fact, I've, the ones that have gone there have been like county road people have gone there and, and looked, and every agency I've talked to supports this wholeheartedly, and most of these people, I know they say, "If this happens and that happens, they will do it." They're never going to support it. It's just like these, the idea of the Coho salmon. They're using these Coho salmon as another reason to block that river. My grandfather was a commercial fisherman in nineteen fifty to their netting fish, and they closed the Rogue River in nineteen fifty and continued to sell them, but they, Coho salmon, and they said they were coming out of Pistol River. They never came out of Pistol River because there wasn't any Coho salmon in there, and that's what these other people are, they're so tired of going to the meetings and nothing happening, and they bring this thing up to me. If these fish people can't get the Coho salmon right, what chance do we have of even communicating with them?
Counsel?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Because you took some additional comments from the applicant, you should allow anyone in the audience who feels the need to respond to this to have a chance to respond to what he just said. And I've been called away by my assistant. I need to go talk to her real quick. I'll be right back.
My name is High Smith. We live in Pistol River, two-four-nine-oh-eight Pistol River Loop. Everything I've heard this morning from Mr. Adams is anecdotal. I've not heard any facts. I've not heard any science. And I think that I would hurt, totally urge the Board and the Commission to reject this until we do have facts and science. Once we have facts and science, I think that the people of Pistol River will abide by the facts and science.
Thank you, sir. All right, at this point. Go ahead, one final comment, please.
So, I keep hearing about these devices that were put in the river.
So I keep hearing about these devices that were put in the river. And they're here on the crook property. However, several years ago, the crooks were ordered to take those devices out. They are not there currently. There are remnants of what was there. They are not functional, and they are doing nothing at all other than degrading and going down the river.
Okay, thank you. All right, at this time, I am concluding the hearing.
I want to say that was completely false what she just said.
Okay, the hearing is concluded. And we are to determine if the record is to be left open, and I believe it has to be left open. So it is the determination of this Board through counsel that this record be left open. So there's no further deliberation needed on the application?
Right, it'll come back... So what the next steps will be? The public hearing is closed. The record is left open for additional written comments. Those will come in. Staff will assimilate them. And after the written comments come in, if there's any new information, there's a seven-day period for people to respond to the new information. So really, it could be as long as 21 days before this comes back to the Board.
All right, so I will say this to everyone in this room. We're not here kicking cans down the road. This is something that we... Ma'am, if you would, please? Ma'am, if you would, please? We're not here to kick cans down the road. We are here to deal with this, and I want you to know that. So in the time allotted, as counsel has stated, we will reconvene to address this. So at this time, this hearing is closed and adjourned. Are we going to take... Well, it's 20 to 12. Do we want to continue on?
What do you got?
Let's get it done, yeah. All right, so at this time, we are... If you would, please move your conversation to the hallway. We need to continue on with our board meeting.
This can be per court, I think, yes. I don't know that I need... Thank you very much, Nancy.
Folks, if we would, please? We need to continue on a hearing. Thank you.
The public is still here for this stuff.
JJ just needed to take a break.
We're still on record, though, right?
The meeting is... We're live.
Okay. You can't wait.
Need to wait for JJ to come back?
Only if you need to.
Okay, we can move on. Let's move on. All right, so it is 11:42 a.m. We are back in session for our November 20, 2019, meeting. Okay, next we are going to go to F, Amending Ordinance 1902 Transient Lodging Tax Implementation. Ms. Schmelzer.
Yes, so Miranda Plagie, who is the staff person responsible for administering the transient lodging tax ordinance...
JJ, one second. Ask them to be quiet out there, please.
With your loudest voice.
Okay, go ahead. I'm sorry.
So Miranda Plagie, who administers our transient lodging tax ordinance, ran into a bit of an issue with Airbnb, which collects money on behalf of their clients. Places are... Companies like Airbnb are referred to as intermediaries. So what we ran into was a problem in collecting that and trying to address that issue. We approached the Promotions Committee, which the county has formed. They had their first meeting a couple of weeks ago. And we brought this idea to... This issue to their attention. And their recommendation was that the Board come back and amend the transient lodging tax ordinance.
Excuse me, we're trying to have a meeting here.
So what the Promotions Committee requested was that the Board amend the ordinance to address intermediaries and how we work with them. And what the recommendation was, was that the Board amended to reflect the current state model ordinance. So what I've done before you is I've added in red what those changes would look like. And then I've also provided you with a cleaned-up copy of what it would look like. Basically, you're looking at changing definitions, making it very clear that we are aware there's intermediaries and how we would work with the intermediaries. Other than that, there really are no substantial changes to it. I mean, it's the same tax. It's due at the same time. The committee structure hasn't changed, but it does make a provision for the intermediaries and how we're going to interact with them. Because we... Because they're supposed to be collecting this tax right now, and because we collect it quarterly, meaning December 31st, in my opinion, this should be treated as an emergency ordinance and not one where we put out for a first reading, a second reading, and then 90-day effective period. Because if we do that, our intermediaries are not going to be able to collect and have it to us by the... Collect for the first quarter, which would then put a lot of our people in violation of the ordinance. So my recommendation is we accept what's in red and that we adopt it as an emergency ordinance.
I so moved.
I'll second that. Further discussion? Roll, please.
Commissioner Gold?
Aye.
Vice Chair Boyce? Absent. Chair Pash?
Aye.
Motion carried two to one.
Two and...
Two to zero, sorry.
Oh, that could be interpreted many ways.
Isn't this a warning?
But there was no vote against it.
All right, next we are going to move to G, which is the Curry County Phone Upgrade, Ms. Schmelzer.
As you know, we had issues with the phone a couple of months ago. This past week, we had major issues with the phone. We are on a 30-day pass right now, which means we have a license that allows us to keep functioning and retrieving voicemails for 30 days. After that, we're going to be in the same situation we were last week, where we're going to have problems with the phone. Originally, when we first encountered a problem with the phone system a couple of months ago, we agreed that we would budget for a phone system upgrade of $57,000, and we would budget for that in the coming year. We're not going to be able to do that. We're not going to be able to wait that long. If we would sign an agreement today saying we were going to move forward, it is still going to take about 30 days to implement that upgrade. So we need to address it sooner than later. My recommendation is that we treat this as an emergency upgrade and do something about it now, instead of waiting for July 1st. Money is, of course, an issue for us. We don't have $57,000 sitting in reserve somewhere to do this.
There's no contingency fund? Period?
The Finance Director is not here right now. She's at AOC to discuss if there is a contingency fund and what is in it, but we do not have a contingency fund for this effect.
This is my problem. I just want to make a comment on this because, you know, we talk about KUS Curry Electric, and I got to say, I'm a little disappointed in them on this, because I talked to them back in February about the phone system. They showed me the issues with the phone system. And I said, "Could we get it moved forward to this budget cycle, meaning 1920?" And they, I want to say, maybe dropped the ball. I'm not blaming anyone in particular for it, but it's caused us the possibility of having to do an emergency action on something that could have been handled in the current budget season.
Well, I do know that when we were preparing for the budget, the main focus with KUS Curry Electric was finding out which computers needed to be upgraded. And we knew that was going to be such an expense that that was the main focus. As soon as we ran into the problem a couple of months ago, KUS Curry Electric immediately got back to us and said, "Hey, you can do this lower cosfix, which is the one the Board agreed to go with come July 1st, or you can do this full upgrade." And they have been really great about keeping us in the loop of where we're at on that system. So I think it just failed quicker than anybody realized or expected it to fail. I will say this, though, too, as far as the financial part of it goes. I did reach out to Business Oregon. They do have a loan fund program that might be able to help us. They can't give us the money, but they can definitely loan us the money. And so I did put in an application, which they'll be processing this coming week to see if we're eligible for the loan, which would mean we would not have to take the $57,000 out of our budget right now. And instead, we could budget for it the coming year or over a period of years.
What percent?
I don't have those details yet. I have to see if they'll... The number of years we could spread it out and what percent that would be at.
Bridge loans are usually one over prime?
Yeah, so right now, we just have the... It's called the project intake form that I submitted. And like I said, they'll be processing it this coming week. But so at the current time, my recommendation would be to move the project up from July 1st to now pending the loan. And if we don't get the loan, come back and figure out how we're going to pay for it.
So moved.
I'll second that. We can't do without phones.
Further discussion? Roll, please.
Commissioner Gold?
Aye.
Vice Chair Boyce? Absent. Chair Pash?
Aye.
Motion carried two to zero.
All right, next we are going to move to Memorandum of Understanding with Park, Public Affairs Research Consultants, Pre-Application for Grant Funding, Ms. Schmelzer.
So these were some matters the Board directed staff to pursue at the last meeting. The first one is Commissioner Boyce had presented the idea of Park Resources perhaps writing some grants for us. And so the first one that's in your packet would be kind of a pre-app where they would come down and they'd look at the bigger projects and say, "Do they qualify? What types of grants could they qualify?" It's basically a data gathering process to prepare them to submit grants in the future or know what that work should be. So that one's not a grant per se, but it is a charge to prepare or do the pre-app. The pre-work, I should say.
Could the county do that just as well?
Well, what he's doing is he's gathering the information to put towards future grants. So he needs to determine... I would say no, because it's... You have to transfer that data. You have to transfer that knowledge. He's come... What he wants to do is come down and do the homework to know how to... What grants to apply for and what he needs, so.
Okay, so what's the fee for this? Is that $3,100?
$3,100.
On the pre-app, it's $3,100.
Is this for all four of these or just this one?
So the pre-app was for three projects. It was for...
Training facility, the fire training facility?
It was to get some data for the USDA, the emergency or the disaster funding opportunity we have with USDA. That would be on the fire training facility and the EOC. Some of that probably staff could provide, because as you'll see later on the agenda, he actually has grant applications or I'm sorry, memorandum of understanding for actual grants on those two projects. And the Board could say, "We're not going to pay you to do pre-app work on that instead. Tell us what you want. Staff will get it ready for you to do the actual application." The other one that's in that pre-app is for the courthouse and jail. What we found out from the state was we're not eligible for the CDBG funds on the courthouse and jail planning right now. The state recommended we go with USDA funds. However, the disaster funds that we're looking at right now aren't the pot of money we would use through USDA for the courthouse and jail. It would be through a different program through USDA.
So when is that available?
We can do the applications now. I'm not sure what the deadline is. But that is basically a community or public facilities program through USDA. And we could just delay action on that until we get more information from them. We could actually have a phone conference with him, if you'd prefer to go that route, to get more information from Mr. Foster.
So I'm looking at the whole thing, and we're talking a total cost of $20,128. And when we have to go out to get a loan for a phone system, it's kind of like... I put it in two categories, like my own budget. Needs, wants. And I'm sorry, this kind of gets in, wants.
Okay, we have a public comment from Mr. Barnes.
Thank you very much, David Barnes. I'd first like to direct you to the first MOU that has as its scope a pre-app. It relates to the courthouse, the EOC, and the training center. And yet, when you look at the other three, there is no MOU for the courthouse. There's an MOU to combine the fire districts in its place. So MOU number one that sets up the scope of the work that they're going to do for the county is flawed. You know, how do you vote on that when it doesn't include all the work that you're looking to have them do? All of the MOUs, when you look at them, the second line on there says that these are subject to the terms and provisions of a contract executed between and by the parties. I'm unaware of a contract that you've executed with Park to do services. So it would be highly irresponsible of you to vote for MOUs when you don't have a contract that details the terms and provisions of those services that you're going to be getting from them. Moving on to... Hang on here. Moving on to Cape Blanco Airport, that was an issue proposed to be $50,000 for land clearing up there. All of a sudden, that's now $250,000 for a full-blown environmental or emergency operations center. I don't know where this grew. I listened to the tape of your 9-6 meeting. You were $50,000 for Cape Blanco. Moving on further then to number three, which is the Fire Training Center. This went from, if I recall, the discussion was that Banden Dunes and WRCA had already given grants to this project to the tune of a few hundred thousand dollars. And this was supposed to be another $250,000 to go towards planning, engineering, design, et cetera. This MOU has changed from that to being seeking a grant to buy the property. I don't know whether this was miscommunication. I don't know where the miscommunication happened, but these four MOUs that you have in front of you do not represent the discussion that you had approving them at the 9-6 meeting. And I'd ask that you withdraw them all at this point in time. You know, without a contract, it's... You know, you cannot vote on these without having a contract that says what you're getting for it. You know, they're flawed in their construct. They do not reflect what you have decided on, and I'd ask you to withdraw them. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Schmelzer?
So Mr. Foster did submit a contract to us, which we were going to discuss in the executive session. So, but Mr. Barnes is correct on some of that. When it came to the EOC, my understanding is originally we talked about $50,000 to clear the site. My understanding was that using those disaster funds, it needed to be more of a complete project. And then Mr. Foster, I believe through... I don't know where he got... He either spoke to staff or through a commissioner, but he proposed what you saw, which was more of a full package, which included the clearing, the geo-tech report, the community process, the preliminary design, the full project, which came up to $250,000, which is item...
It's MOU three.
Yeah, which is item 6J. So I believe that it was if you're going to apply for the money and you want to really be successful at it, it had to be a bigger, more complete project. So that's what that $5,700 would get you, would be the full app... An application for that full project instead of just the site clearing. So, and then as far as the training... I'm sorry, the fire training facility, my understanding was that was for the purchase of the land. Because what happened is Tyson Krieger, the fire chief for the city, had worked and received grant funding for the planning and the design to where they're at. And right now, what they're trying to do is secure the land to actually proceed with that project. So this would be for the grant application to secure that property. I am not sure if Commissioner Boyce had clearly relayed that during the meeting, but I was aware that it was for property is what he was actually looking for that funding.
Well, I think with... In lieu of having to look at the contracts in executive session, I think it would probably be prudent to put this off to the next meeting, and we can bring this back up again.
And I think that's fair. I think we should postpone it until Commissioner Boyce is actually here. I know he was very passionate about this project, and he had... He was working with Mr. Foster quite a bit on it. I also think that we might want Mr. Foster to participate by phone to answer some of the questions.
That might be a good idea.
Yeah, this was just not very specific.
Why don't we do that? Let's plan to have him on the phone as well for our next meeting. All right.
So there's a motion to just continue those items?
To continue this until our next meeting and direct staff to get ahold of, uh, Mr. Foster, to have him available by phone.
I'll second that.
Further discussion? Roll, please.
Commissioner Gold.
Aye.
Vice Chair Boyce. Absent. Chair Pash.
Aye.
Motion carrying two to zero.
So it is right on the noon hour. Do we wanna take our lunch and come back?
Let's do number L first yet.
Okay. Let's do L then, approve order for December twenty-fourth paid holiday.
Right, so you have an order in your packet which would give the employees, um, December twenty-fourth off as a paid holiday. What I did do is I looked at, um, basically leadership and what they're doing at the federal level. I did look at other counties in Curry... or I'm sorry, in Oregon, and different counties. Not all of their schedules are out. Some give that day off, some don't, so we're kind of all over the board with that.
How much would it cost us? I guess that's...
You know, I asked the finance department that question, and they said not... They said no more different than if they were working that day. And I said, "Well, there's gotta be value on that paid holiday." So they weren't able to give me a number of what we pay for a day of work. I do know that I did, um, talk with the departments. I did ask Julie Swift, our payroll and HR coordinator, and she had indicated that on that day, about sixty-five percent of the employees don't show up or taking vacation or off sick pay or whatever they're taking. So we're minimal staff, we're about thirty-five percent staff. I did ask the departments that do deal with the public on those days. They really don't get much at all. Juvenile was one, though, that last year they did... they were busier, but that's because the holiday... December twenty-fourth fell on a Monday, and Mondays are court days, so that's why they were busy on Monday. But, um, the departments don't see a lot of traffic. They don't see a lot of calls. They don't see a lot of response. I do know myself from working government as long as I have, it seems like... Seems like the day before Christmas, you don't get a lot of work out of your employees, and you're better off just not even keeping the doors open, but that's my own personal opinion. I do think in light of the morale issues and some of the issues we've had, I do think it's a good gesture to give the employees that day off as a paid holiday. We're not looking to do it every year. We're looking to just say... I'm looking to say just for this year, it would be a paid holiday. And that's what I have on that. It's really up to the board.
Is there any way we could say, "Okay, this is going to be one of your paid vacation days," or... You can't do that probably legally.
Right, no. You would have to amend the personnel rules if you're gonna do something like that. Our personnel rules pretty much list all of our...
Yeah, I hate to be a Grinch, but I'm looking at money. And if we can't really define what that's gonna cost us, that kind of bothers me, too.
Well, on... but on the flip side, I guess you're paying people to be here, and you're really not getting a lot of work or public service out of it because you're at such a bare staff, and...
But if most of them take that as a holiday, then...
That's true.
Then we wouldn't lose anything on that.
That's true.
So is there a motion?
Can't do it. Not with the phones.
Without a motion, it fails.
Okay.
All right, so let's take our lunch break now. We'll come back. We'll do, uh, brief comments, and then we'll go into executive session. Mr. Barnes, you had one more comment on, uh... Code officer, did you wanna come back after, or did you wanna make your brief comment now?
Right now, make it really brief.
I've heard rumor that there is over five hundred cases of, um, violation of code. There is approximately six thousand residential units in Curry... in unincorporated Curry County. If almost ten percent of them are in violation of code, we don't need a new code officer. We need to look at our code. You know, we need to sit down and look at code. It's when that many people are in violation, you know, the code is what's wrong, and maybe it's not the people and the homeowners.
Okay, thank you.
And that was all I had to say about that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, so at this time, we're gonna recess for lunch. We will be back at one oh five.
If yours is the next big idea, and you need the right place to fine-tune it, build it, launch it. If you're only your best when you can play more than you work. If inspiration comes from the outside, you belong in Curry County. The westernmost point of the land you love and the edge between familiar and uncharted. Break the pattern. Be where the airports are as close as the beaches, and industry and recreation never cease to amaze. Dock, dive, and dine in a single day, and never lose your connection. This is the threshold of the West. Live where you can do you and do it well, at the farthest point from ordinary. Curry County, living on the edge.
One of the things I really appreciate about our entire region is that we embrace who we are, and I think that's what unifies us. Once the timber and fishing industries collapsed, it took us a long time to get back on our feet. People didn't quite grasp the idea that once these jobs left, they weren't going to get other family wage jobs. And it crippled us.
Things were getting really dire, so we just saw that this was an opportunity to maybe look at that public land a little differently and how it could bring more dollars into our region.
The Wild Rivers Coast is so unique because there are more wild and scenic rivers here than anywhere else in the lower forty-eight states. The scenic beauty is just amazing. There's so many different places to go, from the national forests down to the protected ocean, and it's just a really special place.
I guess I didn't really know how special it was, though, until I moved away to Portland and came back and saw all the potential here.
We're uncrowded. We're unspoiled, and we're a little difficult to get to, but my God, once you come here, you fall in love.
We just thought if we could pull people to come into this Wild Rivers Coast and stay longer and explore a little farther into our backcountry, there was a lot of opportunities for them to experience.
I think our whole future is at stake here. This area is ready to go. We just need to give it a little kick in the butt.
I'm gonna be honest, when the rural tourism studio came here, I was skeptical because I didn't see far enough ahead that we actually could collaborate regionally. And I'm pleasantly surprised. It's been amazing.
The rural tourism studios was the first time we were able to come together as a region to talk about the future of our economy.
If we can have a strong tourism economy in this area, it's gonna benefit the whole community.
We have to rely on ourselves, and I think through this program, it's sort of opened our eyes to what we could do when we work together. Community leaders really focused on three areas: outdoor recreation, food and agricultural tourism, and really building community relationships.
In our area, a lot of the food that's grown all gets shipped away. And so now, we're realizing that we can capture some of that local food that's grown here. The Eat Fresh and Local Action Team has hosted a series of networking events, bringing together the area growers with the area vendors so that we could have more local food available to the visitors to our area. And now, we're seeing more local food in our grocery stores, in our restaurants, and we have a new local food co-op.
We created a farm trail from Bandon to Port Orford. We did nine U-Pic farms, and it just gained traction, and people loved it.
Langloes is less than five hundred people. It's very small. So we have to bring in tourists. And being on the farm trail, even though it's just beginning, has really helped do that. We really wanna make it a destination for anybody. My mom and I began Dragonfly Farm just three years ago. When I found out that I could grow a seed and turn that into food, it was like, "Oh, my gosh, why wouldn't you do this?" I just quit my day job, and I just signed the paper to be an official co-owner of the farm. This is what I wanna do for the rest of my life and grow with the community.
Out of the Outdoor Recreation Action Team, we came up with a series of maps that show where the best places to go recreate are. We know where we're gonna send people now, and we got a great map that shows all the best places to go see.
For us to get a mapping project done to this extent is pretty impressive. We're patting ourselves on the back. I don't know what anybody else is, but we're doing it.
From that, we decided that there was some places that needed help, so we came up with a mountain bike plan. And we also worked on designating a state scenic bikeway. The Outdoor Recreation Action Team was also looking at how we can make scuba diving better in this area. So we came up with the idea for a scuba fill station. So now, people that wanna come and dive in this area, they can dive for multiple days because they can get their tanks filled up again. When I started the rural tourism studio, my business, South Coast Tours, was really small. And now, we've grown to about five or six guides, and we're doing tours all over from Brookings all the way up to Coos Bay.
Overall, tourism is on the rise here. We've had a bang the last two years, and it's like a breath of fresh air down here.
My hope for the area is that we still keep that sense of place.
Loving a place to death is a big concern that I have, and it's a balance. We're gonna promote tourism, but we wanna do it in a sustainable way. One of the biggest reasons that this area has been so successful since the tourism studio is the people that are involved. We have a lot of great, motivated, smart people who understand the need to promote tourism in the right way. And it's really all about the people.
When you live in a rural community like we do, from Bandon down to Brookings, and you're strapped for cash, relationships are crucial.
As a community, I think you need to come together and find out what your mission and goals are collectively. Then you can work into smaller groups, knowing that you have the backing of the whole community behind you.
As long as everybody's just super excited about it and passionate about what they're doing, and they can work together, then anything's possible.
Own what you have, and don't try to be something that you're not. It's gonna be hard. It's gonna take a long time, so roll up your sleeves and just dig in with an open mind.
What draws you to the Oregon coast? Is it the green and blue surf on a brilliant sunny day, or angry boiling waves during a raging winter storm? Do you prefer quiet coves or powerful breakers turning the sand? How about sand castles? Do you come for the rising tide or the setting sun? To marvel at whales gliding through the sea or flying in the sky? Reasons to travel the Pacific Coast Scenic Byway are as far-reaching as your imagination. This is a spectacular part of Oregon that traces the entire coastline along Highway one oh one, guiding you to the sea and away again, to coastal towns, big and small, lowland marshes, and breathtaking overlooks. It's a long byway stretching from the mouth of the Columbia River to the California border, three hundred sixty-three miles in all, of some of the most unblemished awe-inspiring seascapes you'll find anywhere. In addition to its designation as a scenic byway, Highway one oh one in Oregon also has been selected as an all-American road. That means when you come here, you will experience one of only thirty-one roads considered to be the best of the best in America.
You know, when people come to the Oregon coast, they're really astonished how beautiful it is. And what separates it from many of the other places in North America that are coastal is how undeveloped it is. And that's because Oregon had a very far-sided land use program back in the nineteen seventies. We have all these wonderful state parks along the scenic byway that are perfect places to stop and enjoy nature in a relatively unspoiled way.
From the north, you begin in Astoria, the first permanent European settlement in the Pacific Northwest. It's a genuine maritime community with ship traffic from around the world seeking harbor up the Columbia. The official State Maritime Museum of Oregon sits here on the river. Beautiful Victorian houses dot the hillside. And standing six hundred feet above sea level is the one hundred twenty-five-foot Astoria Column. It features a hand-painted spiral frieze that would stretch over five hundred feet if unwound. Heading south, you'll find the community of Seaside, a popular vacation spot that offers miles of public beaches, an oceanfront promenade, and a downtown core packed with restaurants, shops, and even a beach-type arcade. Cannon Beach is home to one of Oregon's most photographed natural wonders, Haystack Rock. Get your shots from the beach, or take a short drive up to Ecola State Park and look down on this two hundred thirty-five-foot work of art. The picturesque small town is filled with art galleries, shops, and cafes. Ready for more? Ten miles to the south, this is the view from Cape Falcon. You're seven hundred feet above the Pacific. Here, the Pacific Coast Byway has been carved out of Nea County Mountain and held in place by stone walls built in the nineteen thirties by craftsmen in the Civilian Conservation Corps. Upon descending the mountain, the highway drifts inward around Tillamook Bay to Tillamook, the unofficial dairy capital of Oregon. The verdant valley of dairy farms in this area produces twenty-five million gallons of milk annually. Much of that is processed into natural cheddar cheese. And near more than eight hundred miles of navigable waters, Tillamook is a crossroads for North Coast recreation. From here, you owe it to yourself to veer off Highway one oh one to explore the Three Cape Scenic Loop. This drive places you right at the beach, beginning with Cape Mears, home to the shortest lighthouse in Oregon. Nine lighthouses stand sentinel along Oregon's coastline. They're monuments to our maritime heritage, towering links to the past, and as much a part of the rugged Oregon coastal landscape as any offshore monolith. The Cape Mears Lighthouse was first illuminated in eighteen ninety. Oregon's oldest lighthouse is at Cape Blanco, the westernmost point in the state. It was commissioned in eighteen seventy to aid shipping generated by gold mining and the lumber industry. The ninety-three-foot-high Yaquena Head Lighthouse is the tallest in Oregon. Today, its automated light continues to aid navigation at the entrance to Yaquena Bay. Many of the lighthouses are open to the public. Most happen to be excellent places to view nesting seabirds and offshore sea life. Tide pools, those rocky areas between high and low tides, support unique and diverse plants and animals. Vast amounts of colorful other... Vast amounts of colorful, otherworldly creatures wait to be discovered. But while cautiously, these organisms are tough enough to withstand the pounding surf but are utterly vulnerable to human activity. Wildlife and sea life abound on the coast.
There are six national wildlife refuges along the Oregon coast. The Pacific Coast Scenic Byway bisects these refuges or goes alongside them. It provides you the opportunity to see a wide variety of abundant wildlife, including seabirds, seals and sea lions, deer and elk, and many other wildlife.
Cape Kiwanis lies at the southern end of the Three Cape Scenic Loop, near the town of Pacific City. Here, you'll find a second Haystack Rock on the byway. Hike up the dune to marvel at stunning views of sandstone formations as they turn yellow, gold, or even red in the changing sunlight. If your timing is right, you'll spot one or two of the Dory fleet sprint onto the beach after a day of fishing. How's this for a dinner setting? Restaurants along the Pacific Coast Scenic Byway accommodate just about any taste. Many serve an ocean view with every meal. Up and down the coast, you'll find seafood, of course, but don't limit yourself just because you're by the water. The central coast begins around Lincoln City, which is one of the larger communities on the byway. It has a reputation for being windy and was recognized by Kite Lines Magazine as the best place to fly a kite in North America. It was incorporated from several small towns, and as a result, offers a sandy beach that is seven and a half miles long. A number of small state parks lie nestled along the ocean between Lincoln City and Newport. Stop, get out of your car, and take in the commanding views that are there, right next to your All-American Road. Depot Bay boasts the world's smallest navigable harbor, six square acres in all. A seawall runs the length of the downtown, so everywhere you go, you're rewarded with a dramatic view of the Pacific. It's considered Oregon's whale-watching capital, with thousands making their way past Oregon each fall and spring. Fishing and whale-watching excursions regularly set sail from this little harbor. Leaving Depot Bay, you'll soon find yourself at Cape Fowlweather, a basalt outcropping that looms 500 feet above the water. It was here, in 1778, British Captain James Cook first sighted the mainland of North America on the Pacific coast. A fierce storm that almost put an end to his expedition earned this rugged stretch of coastline its name. Coastal weather can change by the hour. You will find a lot of wet days, but rain can become blue sky with white clouds in an afternoon. Mist kissing the headlands burns away, or storms can last for days. Some people come for those storms. Whether you find sunbursts of happiness or cloud cover like a quilt, there's always a reason to come back. Like Lincoln City, Newport is one of the larger towns on the byway. The historic bayfront on the north side of Yaquena Bay hosts one of Oregon's largest commercial fishing fleets. It has a busy, genuine working waterfront field, with fish plants and boats coming and going from as far away as Alaska. On the south side of the bay is the Oregon Coast Aquarium. Share waters beneath the ocean with sharks and rays. And don't miss the sea otters at mealtime.
All four of our otters were rescued otters. They were found out in the wild.
For the next 50 miles, your trip along Highway 101 hugs the coast. Many more state parks offer opportunities to stop and take in outstanding vistas, crashing waves, and offshore rock formations. Two small towns of note are Waldport and Yahats. Waldport sits on Alsea Bay, where fishing, clamming, and crabbing are popular. The 40-mile stretch south of Waldport marks steep headlands, jagged volcanic outcrops, and jaw-dropping scenery, the rugged edge of the Oregon coast. Yahats is a quiet, unhurried artist town just a couple of miles north of Cape Perpetua. Drive to the top of this bluff, and you'll be 800 feet above the water. On a clear day, you can see 70 miles of Oregon coastline. Drive past Hasida Head Lighthouse to the sea lion caves. A quick elevator ride 200 feet down puts you in America's largest sea cave, the year-round home of wild stellar sea lions. Rugged cliffs give way to graceful beaches as you approach Florence. In the spring, be on the lookout for wild rodendrons along the road sides. Similar to Newport, you'll find an historic old-town commercial district along the Sayuslaw River. Florence is the gateway to the Oregon Dunes National Recreation Area, a 47-mile sandbox of windsculpted sand dunes towering 500 feet above sea level. These are the largest expanse of coastal sand dunes in North America. Reed's Port is at the center of the Oregon Dunes, but you can do more than ride a dune buggy or motorcycle. A short three miles east of town on Highway 38, more than 100 Roosevelt elk reside at the Dean Creek Elk Viewing Area. Early mornings or just before dusk are the best times to photograph the herd. Paying homage to Oregon's timber heritage, Reed's Port hosts an annual chainsaw sculpting championship, a time to watch three-dimensional artwork come to life right before your eyes. Mountains of sand continue at Winchester Bay. You'll also find an active marina here. It's a great place to try your hand at crabbing or take a charter for salmon or bottom fishing. The dunes end, and you enter the coast's largest urban area, at Coos Bay. It has the deepest natural harbor between Seattle and San Francisco. Foreign vessels sail under the massive McCullough Bridge. You may have noticed dotted along the Pacific Coast Scenic Byway are many beautiful and iconic bridges. The Megler Bridge in Astoria, Yaquena Bay Bridge in Newport, Alsea Bay Bridge in Waldport, Sayuslaw River Bridge in Florence, and the magnificent McCullough Bridge in Coos Bay are works of art in their own right. Charleston is slightly off the byway at the mouth of the bay. It was once an old waterfront fishing village and has become a commercial and sport fishing center. From here, the Charleston-to-Bandon tour route offers another side trip off the byway. It's a wonderful way to explore a variety of natural Pacific coast beauty in a number of settings: beaches, vistas, gardens, and more. Giant sea stacks, a tiny lighthouse, and an old town await you in Bandon. Do you like to golf? This remote area on the Oregon coast has not one, but three of the most stunning and challenging golf courses in the world. As you drive south of town, look for brilliant red bogs in the fall. You're passing through the cranberry capital of Oregon. After a trek through forests and farmlands, you'll reach Port Orford. The Wild Coast has begun. You're in the most westerly city in the continental United States, and you've reached some of the most awesome scenery on the byway. Here, you can watch a fishing fleet launched by Crane in one of only six dolly ports in the world. Port Orford covers less than two square miles. It's similar to many communities that call this All-American Road home. Small in size, still with a lot to offer. Like Manzanita, with a vibrant business district and beautiful setting at the base of Nea County Mountain. You can board a fishing charter out of Garibaldi, swim in freshwater lakes near Dune City, catch world-class windsurfing at Pistol River. There is little development from Port Orford to Gold Beach, outlet for the renowned Rogue River. Feel like going for a ride? Jet boat excursions run from May into October up this wild and scenic river. Or maybe a midday walk on an uncrowded beach is more your speed. The last dozen miles of the Pacific Coast Byway leading into Brookings save some of the best for last. Treat yourself to frequent stops along the Samuel H. Boardman Scenic Corridor. Short hikes reward you with the best views in this shining stretch of coastline. Walk, relax, and be amazed along the coves and the crashing surf. The world's northernmost redwood grove is eight miles from the mouth of the Chetco River in Brookings. So you've toured nature's finest art museum. You've dined elegantly, hung out with sea lions, unwound like you wish you could every day. What else is there to do? Step back in history near Astoria. Ride a horse along the waves near Florence. Pet a baby tiger near Bandon. Hike a trail, sample gourmet cheese, eat fresh-caught crab, watch a sunset.
When you come to the Oregon coast and walk on the beaches or go to the headlands and go to the small coastal towns, you really can commune with nature, and you don't have huge numbers of people, but you're also able to take in one of America's last great unspoiled seascapes.
So what draws you to the Oregon coast? What favorite places lure you back again and again? Each visit is different. The ocean, the sky, the light, and the experience always continue to amaze. Shouldn't you be there?
Wildfire, as everyone knows, has emerged as one of the big, major issues affecting Oregon, and for that matter, all Western states. A real actionable response that's including how do we fight fire, actively managing our forests so that we don't have the fuels out there, and how are we going to protect communities from smoke exposures? The council's really set up to have a comprehensive strategy that's based on action and based on protecting our communities.
The primary focus we, as a board, have come through with is that in researching the policies for fire management, yes, prescribed fire has its place on the landscape, but not during fire season. We, as a county, passed a proclamation that says once the state fire marshal declares fire season, it'll be nothing but full suppression, and recently took a resolution to the National Association of Counties that essentially says that they support coordination between agencies and local governments for the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens regarding fire. Prescribed fire, fire season, anything that affects our citizens.
This is Lily Morgan from Josephine County, and we are at the Rogue Leadership Forum today, looking at the best possible partnerships that we can come up with to fight the fire issues and the smoke issues that we're facing in southwest Oregon. So looking forward to coming up with solutions and the partnerships to get the job done so we don't face what we have the last few years with catastrophic fires and smoke that invades our communities for months to come. So this is a good opportunity, and we hope to be successful in the outcome.
Seeing so many people come together has really been exciting for me because there's a lot of expertise, there's a lot of resources, and as we attempt to do a shared stewardship approach to keeping people safe, it's really important that we get together. So my name is Murph George Jr., and I'm the forest supervisor for the Rogue River Siski National Forest. The first thing is making sure to get fires out if they're threatening life and property. The second thing that I'm going to focus in on is when it's safe to do so, to put some fire on the landscape when it's cooler and not during fire season, to reduce these same fuels that are giving us so much fits during the fire season.
Bob Horton, I'm the fire chief of Jackson County Fire District 3 in southern Oregon. The challenges that are facing us in terms of the mega fires and the wildfires that we've been experiencing out in this valley, particularly in the last couple of years, but across the state and across the region, incredibly concerning to us and the fire community, those in our communities in general, our constituents and our patrons are extremely concerned as they ought to be. Really, the takeaway from the work that's being done now is this is an extraordinary collaboration of dozens on dozens of interested stakeholder groups who are coming together with a common purpose. It's really an inspiring showing of humanity to not only be able to provide for a greater quality of life for our people, but to be strong stewards of our land so that our future for us and generations to come is incredibly bright.
Very pressing issue. It's bearing down on us. Fire season is approaching, and I am really interested in preventing my home and other homes in my community from being impacted by wildfires specifically from being burnt down. That's my main reason for being involved.
Quite a collaboration of folks. We're here looking for practical solutions to help us unravel some of the issues surrounding wildfires today here in the state of Oregon. And my focus really is on planning for large wildfire events in advance of their occurrence. That way, when they do occur, we can respond more appropriately to those situations.
Well, I just think it's grand if all of the people all over the state have come together today to be concerned about water. It just warms my heart because I know that they really will leave here today feeling more impressed about the water because I have told them that we're all born in water. We cannot live without it. It's our job to take care of and stop the garbage in the rivers and streams and oceans because there's life in that water, and it's our job to keep it clean for them. We cannot live on this planet without the animal kingdom. I was in Ohio at the Ohio River with Dr. Emoto, the Japanese scientist who had proven water could hear. He and I stood on the riverbank blessing the Ohio River that they had us come to do, and I prayed that God has still kept the river good for them over there. We were taught from Berlin that prayer works. You too will remember your prayers because they work. It has nothing to do with religion or church.
There's something about having land and sea. Never having to choose between digging in or looking out. Here, you can go where the spirit or the wind moves you. To the tops of the trees, along secluded beaches, or into more wild and scenic rivers than anywhere else in the western United States. We're the closest place to the sunset while still keeping your feet dry and a destination where anyone can begin. We share more than we keep, so you can see more than you imagined. This is a place you have to touch, hold, and feel to believe. The entire shoreline of the West Coast's best coast is open to you, and playgrounds made of forests are waiting for you. Escape to Curry County, and don't leave anything out.
Roadway departure fatalities are a serious and often preventable problem in the United States. The Federal Highway Administration reports that 54% of all highway fatalities are caused by drivers leaving their lane of travel. The Oregon Department of Transportation is taking a proactive approach to reduce this kind of tragedy by implementing a centerline and shoulder rumble strip program.
Rumble strips are one of the most low-cost, cost-effective countermeasures that we can apply across the system.
Rumble strips are grooved patterns on the roadway that make a rumbling sound and a physical vibration immediately warning inattentive drivers that they're leaving their driving lane. Rumble strips allow drivers to self-correct and avoid an accident.
About 67% of fatal crashes in Oregon are road departure crashes, which are a vehicle can leave the lane to the right and hit a ditch or a rock or a tree, something like that, or cross over the centerline to the left and get in a head-on collision or a sideswipe meeting type crash.
Over an eight-year period, ODOT engineers studied segments of 16 different highways and concluded that rumble strips are highly effective at reducing lane departures.
We did a before and after crash analysis to find that we have reduced head-on fatalities by 40% with the installation of centerline rumble strips.
We've been trying to find a way to deal with a problem that seems to be increasing over the last 10 or 15 years with our drivers, and that's distracted driving. And there's a lot of things that cause distracted driving. All these distractions are things that make people take their attention away from where it should be.
Comparisons between other available safety features like guardrail and concrete barriers show that shoulder and centerline rumble strips are the most cost-effective safety treatment available.
We're finding that those are very effective in trying to make sure that when you do make that mistake, it's not the last mistake you make. They help bring your attention back to the driving task and bring you back to where you should be, focusing on being in the middle of your lane and being safe.
ODOT makes a conscious effort to use a bike-friendly rumble strip design where possible and installs 12-foot bike gaps every 48 feet of rumble strip. ODOT understands that rumble strips create a noise that can be disruptive for people who live near rural highways, and we're trying to address these concerns with different approaches.
For the noise, we're looking at some new designs. We're hoping that the new design rumble strip will be just as effective at saving people from making an error and much quieter, on the order of 10 times as quiet. from making an error, and much quieter, on the order of 10 times as quiet. And we're actually going to be installing our first full set of these style of rumble strips along 205 this summer.
So we recognize that noise is a concern, but one of the things I like to tell people is whenever you hear the sound of a rumble strip, it could be the sound of the life being saved of one of your loved ones.
Rumble strips are proven to save lives. The Oregon Department of Transportation is taking the lead in implementing the Sound of Safety.
Well, we're here with Commissioner Colleen Roberts for the monthly meeting of the ONC Board, which Colleen sits on. Colleen, why don't you tell our audience a little bit about your mission and what you guys discuss at these monthly meetings?
Sure. Our ONC Board is of the 18 counties in Oregon that have the ONC lands on their BLM, federal lands. And we discuss everything about these lands. The ONC Act of 1937 is our primary focus, how the decisions that these lands get managed, do they match up with the congressional mandate of the ONC Act, and how we can better educate and help administer the care of these lands for the health and safety and welfare of the citizens that we represent.
I would imagine you discuss things like how many board feet can be taken out of the forest in different areas, are these things that come up each month?
Yes, well, harvest timber management is a big part of our conversation, as is lately the fire issues.
We're here today with Commissioner Dan DeYoung of Josephine County. Dan, you have an important role on the ONC lands board, and we're here in beautiful Gold Beach, Oregon, discussing the monthly matters of ONC. What was your main focus at this meeting?
Today, we had a really good sit-down with two representatives of the BLM, and there's constantly, we work with BLM, because actually, the ONC lands are on BLM lands, and that's our concern. Mainly, the ONC Board of Directors, which is a membership from all 18 counties, we always meet, I think it's bi-monthly, and then we have an annual meeting, and it's basically to discuss what the sign says, Forest Health Jobs and County Services, that the money coming from the sale of timber on ONC lands goes through the federal government, they take their share out of it, and then return it back to the counties to be used for basically jobs, county services, a lot of county services, such as law enforcement, schools, there's just an awful lot of things that these individual counties can use the money for, but it's from the sale of timber on the ONC lands. ONC lands goes way back to 1937 with the 1937 ONC Congressional Act, and the ONC Act of 1937. We're just trying to get back to the actual verbiage and the language that's in that act. It's surprising to us how we can ignore a congressional act. It remains to be answered by the federal government, but that's what we want to get back to.
Hi there. I'm Tillamook County Commissioner Dave Yamamoto. I'm a member of the ONC Board and also the Chair of the Council of Forest Trust Land Counties. And in Tillamook County, it's very important that we consider natural resource-based economies. So in Tillamook County, we have lots of dairy, I'm sure you're familiar with Tillamook creamery, but also lots of state and federal timber lands. When it comes to federal timber lands in particular, everyone thinks that we're looking at timber revenue, and that's very important, but one side of the coin that people don't consider are the family wage jobs that come with old timber. It's not just the timber receipts that we get. These are family wage jobs, these are fully benefited jobs, whereas on the tourism side, the income is about a third of what we would consider a family wage job, and there are also no benefits with those. So timber receipts are very important, but it's the family wage jobs that they create at the same time, which are very important to counties like Tillamook.
Perfect. Keeping it real for families in Tillamook County.
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Yamamoto.
Thank you very much.
All right. We are here with County Commissioner Bob Maine from Coos County, Oregon, and we've had the monthly meeting of ONC lands here. And Mr. Maine, Commissioner Maine, I should say, tell us what your role is, Bob, on the ONC lands board.
I am the Vice President of the ONC Association of ONC Counties. It consists of 18 ONC counties, western Oregon counties, and we make sure that the counties receive their payments from those ONC lands that Congress designated for the sole purpose of those 18 ONC counties, for no other reason. Congress decided that when they took back the lands and took them off the tax roll, that the counties should benefit from the harvest of those lands. Without that, the tax rates, like in my county, would be two to three times higher.
Oh, okay. So you help keep the tax rates down in your county by utilizing the full function of this congressional act?
Absolutely.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for your service.
Thank you.
We are here with Oregon Curry County Commissioner Court Boyce. Thank you so much for taking a moment to speak with us.
Well, thank you. With the natural resource base that this state has, I've spent, or spending better than half of my time as a county commissioner on those issues, fire management, public lands management, certainly natural resources, all of those. And so I'm often reminded that 250 years ago, the generations that came before us when they got here to Oregon, include Northern California, they found the greatest forest in all of North America, that produced the greatest watersheds, that produced the most pristine rivers, that give us the highest quality of salmonage that runs, arguably, on the planet.
How many letters?
Five letters.
Just think about, what am I doing right now? Smile. Smile? Uh-huh. This is so easy.
Sign that doesn't have a rider on it, so we take our first test at this posted speed limit of...
By weeks, the Harley-Bridle's are seeing more than their share of curvy roads these days. Their job is to drive every section of highway in Region 1 several times.
The old limits were set back in the 1930s and 40s, and were changed very little until just recently. So now our limits are taking into account newer vehicles, a little bit more aggressive driving style, and so those limits are going up.
And going up in a big way. This is Eric Leeming, a traffic devices engineer with ODOT. He's driving an ordinary car with some extraordinary tech onboard, a GPS device that records data as he maneuvers every curve in the road. Back at his office, Eric can upload the data recorded in the car, and special software determines exactly the right speed for every curve, every time. Most speeds will increase by five to 10 miles per hour, but in some special cases, it's much higher.
The state has a deadline of 2019 from the Federal Highway Administration, but with 8,000 miles of roads to investigate and potentially thousands of signs to change, they're not wasting any time, they're getting out there right now.
Now we're going to W-113.
About 800 signs along this section.
That's a lot of signs.
It's a lot of signs. If it's 35 mile an hour corner, you should be taking it at 35 miles an hour.
America's 3,069 county governments provide fundamental services for building healthy, safe, and vibrant communities. We are an intergovernmental partner, implementing federal and state policies at the local level, often under strict rules and funding constraints. County governments, through the National Association of Counties, engage federal policymakers on a range of issues like transportation, infrastructure, healthcare, public safety, and public lands management. All of these issues are vital to our nation's quality of life and our long-term prosperity. Decisions made by the White House, Congress, and federal courts have a major cascading impact on our ability to lead our communities and pursue a better future. Let's look at why federal policies matter to county government, and why county government matters to America. Counties provide vital services that keep our communities thriving and secure. We own and maintain 45% of roads and four out of 10 bridges. We own more than a third of the airports and hundreds of hospitals and thousands of courthouses, jails, 911 call centers, and libraries. We play a critical role during emergencies like hurricanes, floods, and snowstorms. What if you called 911 and no one answered? What if you couldn't reach your medical facility because roads and bridges were in disrepair or never built? County governments are an indispensable part of the infrastructure and services that keep residents safe and connected. But with very limited revenue options under most state constitutions and laws, counties must make every penny count in order to fulfill federal and state mandates and required responsibilities. Nothing is more basic in our society than essential public facilities like schools, hospitals, airports, jails, bridges, and other infrastructure, yet proposals have surfaced to eliminate or scale back tax-exempt municipal bonds. For over a century, municipal bonds have been the lifeblood for our nation's public infrastructure, helping finance more than $3.7 trillion in essential projects. If tax-exempt municipal bonds were eliminated or scaled back, county governments and our residents would face billions in new costs when financing vital facilities. Additionally, counties rely on MAP-21 and the Federal Highway Trust Fund to complement local transportation financing resources. With growing demands and mounting costs, we need a reliable federal partner to invest with us in our nation's economic growth and competitiveness. We need a long-term legislative solution with increased funding to ensure continued success in operating our nation's transportation system. Counties face further revenue losses each year because billions of dollars in e-commerce sales tax revenue isn't collected. The Marketplace Fairness Act would enable states and localities to collect existing already owed taxes. It would also level the playing field between many internet retailers who don't collect sales taxes and Main Street businesses that do. County governments provide support services to federal public lands, touching 700 million annual visitors. We lead search and rescue operations, fight fires, protect the public's health, and maintain roads. Federal lands cover nearly one-third of the US and impact 69% of counties. Because federal land is exempt from local property taxes, counties depend on PILT, the Payment in Lieu of Taxes Program, to provide essential services. The Secure Rural Schools Program provides assistance to rural counties and school districts affected by the decline in revenue from timber harvests on federal land. Decisions to cut or delay funding both programs undermine our ability to provide services and maintain public lands. Our intergovernmental partnerships don't end with legislation, because counties also implement and comply with federal and state regulations. When considering environmental protections, we know our communities and care deeply about the environment. We need a stronger voice in shaping common sense regulations that protect communities while also promoting economic growth. This is why NACO secured significant improvements to FEMA's flood insurance program and is pushing back on the waters of the US-proposed rule. Our message: Federal policies matter to county government, and county government matters to America. Every level of government must work together to shape policies that improve the quality of life for all Americans. Whether it's building and maintaining infrastructure, providing essential services, or fostering economic growth, counties are on the front line serving their citizens. NACO stands ready to work with the administration and Congress to make our nation's communities healthier, safer, and more vibrant places to live and work.
Counties matter. Counties serve nearly every American every day, urban, suburban, and rural. Counties work with states, the federal government, and other public and private partners to keep our communities healthy, vibrant, and safe. Whether you're commuting to work or shipping goods around the globe, counties matter. Counties own and maintain 45% of the nation's roads and four out of 10 bridges. And we're involved in nearly a third of public airports and transit systems. Counties matter when Americans need us the most. Counties matter because we support smart, fair, and effective criminal justice systems. We help fund police and sheriff's departments. We own and operate local jails, 911 call centers, and mental health facilities. Counties create healthy communities. We invest more than $80 billion in hospitals and medical services each year. Counties matter because we invest in the lives of residents of all ages, improving their quality of life where they live and work. Counties are the building blocks of state, regional, and national economies. We support housing, recreation, and economic development, and we do so much more. From issuing birth certificates to administering elections, counties employ more than 3.5 million people. In total, we invest more than half a trillion dollars in our residents and our communities every year. Counties provide essential services we all depend on every day. That's why counties matter.
Why do counties matter? Simple. Counties provide the services we all depend on. If you're concerned about crime, get a regular flu shot, drive to work, take public transportation, or experience a natural disaster in your community, chances are you benefit from county services.
Chances are, you benefit from county services. That's why counties matter. With America's system of federalism, counties are a key level of government, serving the people directly. So, do you vote? Had a recent hospital stay? Know someone in a nursing home? More reasons why counties matter. There are 3,069 counties across the country, with populations big and small. Most of us live and work in one. Even the nation's capital is considered a county. These county governments ensure that the food you eat in restaurants is safe. They care for the mentally ill. Run court systems. Build local economies. And operate 911 emergency systems. They manage parks and recreation facilities. And the list goes on. Thing is, counties serve the American people in so many ways: keeping our communities healthy, vibrant, safe, and fiscally sound. That's why counties matter.
Yeah, I just picked her up. We should be there in 20 minutes.
Who is it? Oh, it's him. Where is he?
I know. Yeah, I know.
When a large forest fire breaks out, potentially threatening lives, homes, wildlife, and thousands of acres of forest land, the news coverage is immediate and consistent. Interviews with homeowners, firefighters, medical aid providers, and others continues nonstop until the fire is sufficiently contained. At that point, the cameras are turned off, the interviews are over, and it's on to the next event. The images of catastrophic wildfire with its ferocity and devastating impact on the land hold the interest and attention of the public. However, there is an equally important story occurring on that same landscape after the fire is contained, mopped up, and finally declared out that the public seldom sees. The frequency and size of these mega fires on federal forest land has increased significantly over the last few decades. All too often, what is left in their wake is a vast sea of dead charred trees. Unfortunately, because of a maze of confusing and often contradictory rules and regulations, very little rehabilitation or reforestation occurs after these fires. The result of this neglect, in many cases, is as devastating as the fire itself. Here's why. Even in the hottest, severe fires, most of the dead trees remain standing, the wood not damaged by the fire, still suitable and valuable for lumber. But as the insects move in, within months, the dead and dying trees begin to deteriorate and decompose. Eventually, all of the economic value is lost. What is not removed will decay, add fuel to an even greater future fire threat, and in the process, release the greenhouse gases that the trees gathered and stored during the centuries they were alive. When all of the trees across the tens of thousands of acres burned in each of these mega fires are left to rot, millions of tons of destructive greenhouse gases are released into the upper atmosphere. These are the same volatile organic compounds that have been identified as some of the most damaging elements we can put into our air. In contrast, trees harvested soon after the fire is out drive the economic engine that employs people, provides revenue for the critical restoration and reforestation, and can provide dollars for local government services such as schools, public safety, health and social services, libraries, and good roads. When the harvested trees are made into lumber for homes, construction, and furniture, the carbon remains in storage instead of going up into the atmosphere. Dead and dying timber becomes a magnet for insect infestation. These infestations can be so large that they do not end with the burned forest but progress into the surrounding green forest, killing even more trees, which then become even more fodder for the next fire. In absence of prompt active management and reforestation, invasive brush can dominate the landscape. That brush can retard and even prohibit the growth of the new forest and compound the fuel load for a future fire. When that fire does occur, the dense brush and dead fallen trees on the ground create a firestorm, burning hotter and even more damaging to the soil than the first fire. These damaged soils can repel water, lack the nutrients and organic matter needed by seedlings, and hinder the ability of new trees to grow. While mega fires can be so devastating, not all fires are bad. When the conditions are right, fire has been used for decades as an effective way to reduce fuels on the forest floor, burn back brush and dead grass to stimulate the new growth desired by wildlife, thinning out the younger, overstocked areas of our forests, and maintain the fire resiliency we seek. Controlled burning can be a powerful and useful tool, used in the right places, at the right time, by the professionals we charge with managing these forests. The desired result is to lessen the potential for the large devastating mega fires we have been experiencing these past few decades. Recovery after mega fires is not only possible but can greatly expedite the restoration and creation of all of the benefits of a healthy forest ecosystem. One fine example is Oregon's Tillamook.
I got to the bank to pick up my earnest money. I was ready to call the lawyer today, and I got to know it better.
Okay, so we are live on the record. It is November 20th at 1:06 PM. And at this time, we are going to recess this meeting and go into executive session. Alright, so we are in recess in this meeting.
To restore the burned landscape, what can you do? Contact your elected federal, state, and local officials. Tell them these federal lands and once treasured forests are too valuable to simply walk away. Future generations are depending upon you to take action. For more information, visit us on Facebook at Communities for Healthy Forests.
If yours is the next big idea, and you need the right place to fine-tune it, build it, launch it, if you're only your best when you can play more than you work, if inspiration comes from the outside, you belong in Curry County. The westernmost point of the land you love and the edge between familiar and uncharted. Break the pattern. Be where the airports are as close as the beaches, and industry and recreation never cease to amaze. Dock, dive, and dine in a single day, and never lose your connection. This is the threshold of the West. Live where you can do you and do it well, at the farthest point from ordinary. Curry County: Living on the Edge.
One of the things I really appreciate about our entire region is that we embrace who we are, and I think that's what unifies us. Once the timber and fishing industries collapsed, it took us a long time to get back on our feet. People didn't quite grasp the idea that once these jobs left, they weren't going to get other family-wage jobs, and it crippled us. Things were getting really dire, so we just thought that this was an opportunity to maybe look at that public land a little differently and how it could bring more dollars into our region.
The Wild Rivers Coast is so unique because there are more wild and scenic rivers here than anywhere else in the lower 48 states. The scenic beauty is just amazing. There's so many different places to go, from the national forests down to the protected ocean, and it's just a really special place.
I guess I didn't really know how special it was, though, until I moved away to Portland and came back and saw all the potential here.
We're uncrowded, we're unspoiled, and we're a little difficult to get to, but my God, once you come here, you fall in love.
We just thought if we could pull people to come into this Wild Rivers Coast and stay longer and explore a little farther into our backcountry, there was a lot of opportunities for them to experience.
I think our whole future is at stake here. This area is ready to go, we just need to give it a little kick in the butt.
I'm gonna be honest, when the Rural Tourism Studio came here, I was skeptical because I didn't see far enough ahead that we actually could collaborate regionally, and I'm pleasantly surprised, it's been amazing.
The Rural Tourism Studios was the first time we were able to come together as a region to talk about the future of our economy.
If we can have a strong tourism economy in this area, it's gonna benefit the whole community.
We have to rely on ourselves, and I think through this program, it's sort of opened our eyes to what we could do when we work together. Community leaders really focused on three areas: outdoor recreation, food and agricultural tourism, and really building community relationships.
In our area, a lot of the food that's grown all gets shipped away, and so now we're realizing that we can capture some of that local food that's grown here. The Eat Fresh and Local Action Team has hosted a series of networking events, bringing together the area growers with the area vendors, so that we could have more local food available to the visitors to our area. And now we're seeing more local food in our grocery stores, in our restaurants, and we have a new local food co-op.
We created a farm trail from Bandon to Port Orford. We did nine U-Pick farms, and it just gained traction, and people loved it.
Langloes is less than 500 people, it's very small, so we have to bring in tourists. And being on the farm trail, even though it's just beginning, has really helped do that. We really want to make it a destination for anybody. My mom and I began Dragonfly Farm just three years ago. When I found out that I could grow a seed and turn that into food, it was like, oh my gosh, why wouldn't you do this? I just quit my day job and I just signed the paper to be an official co-owner of the farm. This is what I want to do for the rest of my life, and grow with the community.
Out of the Outdoor Recreation Action Team, we came up with a series of maps that show where the best places to go recreate are. We know where we're gonna send people now, and we got a great map that shows all the best places to go see.
For us to get a mapping project done to this extent is pretty impressive. We're patting ourselves on the back. I don't know what anybody else is, but we're doing it.
From that, we decided that there was some places that needed help, so we came up with a mountain bike plan, and we also worked on designating a state scenic bikeway. The Outdoor Recreation Action Team was also looking at how we can make scuba diving better in this area, so we came up with the idea for a scuba fill station. So now people that want to come and dive in this area, they can dive for multiple days because they can get their tanks filled up again. When I started the Rural Tourism Studio, my business, South Coast Tours, was really small, and now we've grown to about five or six guides, and we're doing tours all over from Brookings all the way up to Cuz Bay.
Overall, tourism is on the rise here. We've had a bang the last two years, and it's like a breath of fresh air down here.
My hope for the area is that we still keep that sense of place.
Loving a place to death is a big concern that I have, and it's a balance. We're gonna promote tourism, but we want to do it in a sustainable way. One of the biggest reasons that this area has been so successful since the Tourism Studio is the people that are involved. We have a lot of great, motivated, smart people who understand the need to promote tourism in the right way, and it's really all about the people.
When you live in a rural community like we do, from Bandon down to Brookings, and you're strapped for cash, relationships are crucial.
As a community, I think you need to come together and find out what your mission and goals are collectively, then you can work into smaller groups knowing that you have the backing of the whole community behind you.
As long as everybody's just super excited about it and passionate about what they're doing and they can work together, then anything's possible.
Own what you have, and don't try to be something that you're not. It's gonna be hard, it's gonna take a long time, so roll up your sleeves and just dig in with an open mind.
What draws you to the Oregon coast? Is it the green and blue surf on a brilliant sunny day, or angry boiling waves during a raging winter storm? Do you prefer quiet coves or powerful breakers turning the sand? How about sand castles? Do you come for the rising tide or the setting sun, to marvel at whales gliding through the sea or flying in the sky? Reasons to travel the Pacific Coast Scenic Byway are as far-reaching as your imagination. This is a spectacular part of Oregon that traces the entire coastline along Highway 101, guiding you to the sea and away again, to coastal towns, big and small, lowland marshes, and breathtaking overlooks. It's a long byway stretching from the mouth of the Columbia River to the California border, 363 miles in all, of some of the most unblemished, awe-inspiring seascapes you'll find anywhere. In addition to its designation as a scenic byway, Highway 101 in Oregon also has been selected as an all-American road. That means when you come here, you will experience one of only 31 roads considered to be the best of the best in America.
You know, when people come to the Oregon coast, they're really astonished how beautiful it is, and what separates it from many of the other places in North America that are coastal is how undeveloped it is, and that's because Oregon had a very And that's because Oregon had a very far-sided land use program back in the 1970s. We have all these wonderful state parks along the scenic byway that are perfect places to stop and enjoy nature in a relatively unspoiled way.
From the north, you begin in Astoria, the first permanent European settlement in the Pacific Northwest. It's a genuine maritime community with ship traffic from around the world seeking harbor up the Columbia. The official state maritime museum of Oregon sits here on the river. Beautiful Victorian houses dot the hillside. And standing 600 feet above sea level is the 125-foot Astoria Column. It features a hand-painted spiral frieze that would stretch over 500 feet if unwound. Heading south, you'll find the community of Seaside, a popular vacation spot that offers miles of public beaches, an oceanfront promenade, and a downtown core packed with restaurants, shops, and even a beach-type arcade. Cannon Beach is home to one of Oregon's most photographed natural wonders: Haystack Rock. Get your shots from the beach. Or take a short drive up to Ecola State Park and look down on this 235-foot work of art. The picturesque small town is filled with art galleries, shops, and cafes. Ready for more? 10 miles to the south, this is the view from Cape Falcon. You're 700 feet above the Pacific. Here, the Pacific Coast Byway has been carved out of Nea County Mountain and held in place by stone walls built in the 1930s by craftsmen in the Civilian Conservation Corps. Upon descending the mountain, the highway drifts inward around Tillamook Bay to Tillamook, the unofficial dairy capital of Oregon. The verdant valley of dairy farms in this area produces 25 million gallons of milk annually. Much of that is processed into natural cheddar cheese. And near more than 800 miles of navigable waters, Tillamook is a crossroads for North Coast recreation. From here, you owe it to yourself to veer off Highway 101 to explore the Three Cape Scenic Loop. This drive places you right at the beach, beginning with Cape Mir's, home to the shortest lighthouse in Oregon. Nine lighthouses stand sentinel along Oregon's coastline. They're monuments to our maritime heritage, towering links to the past, and as much a part of the rugged Oregon coastal landscape as any offshore monolith. The Cape Mir's Lighthouse was first illuminated in 1890. Oregon's oldest lighthouse is at Cape Blanco, the westernmost point in the state. It was commissioned in 1870 to aid shipping generated by gold mining and the lumber industry. The 93-foot-high Yaquena Head Lighthouse is the tallest in Oregon. Today, its automated light continues to aid navigation at the entrance to Yaquena Bay. Many of the lighthouses are open to the public. Most happen to be excellent places to view nesting seabirds and offshore sea life. Tide pools, those rocky areas between high and low tides, support unique and diverse plants and animals. Vast amounts of colorful, otherworldly creatures wait to be discovered. But walk cautiously. These organisms are tough enough to withstand the pounding surf, but are utterly vulnerable to human activity. Wildlife and sea life abound on the coast.
There are six national wildlife refuges along the Oregon coast. The Pacific Coast Scenic Byway bisects these refuges or goes alongside them. It provides you the opportunity to see a wide variety of abundant wildlife, including seabirds, seals and sea lions, deer and elk, and many other wildlife.
Cape Kiwanis lies at the southern end of the Three Cape Scenic Loop, near the town of Pacific City. Here, you'll find a second Haystack Rock on the byway. Hike up the dune to marvel at stunning views of sandstone formations as they turn yellow, gold, or even red in the changing sunlight. If your timing is right, you'll spot one or two of the Dory fleet sprint onto the beach after a day of fishing. How's this for a dinner setting? Restaurants along the Pacific Coast Scenic Byway accommodate just about any taste. Many serve an ocean view with every meal. Up and down the coast, you'll find seafood, of course, but don't limit yourself just because you're by the water. The central coast begins around Lincoln City, which is one of the larger communities on the byway. It has a reputation for being windy and was recognized by Kite Lines Magazine as the best place to fly a kite in North America. It was incorporated from several small towns, and as a result, offers a sandy beach that is seven and a half miles long. A number of small state parks lie nestled along the ocean between Lincoln City and Newport. Stop, get out of your car, and take in the commanding views that are there, right next to your All-American Road. Depot Bay boasts the world's smallest navigable harbor, six square acres in all. A seawall runs the length of the downtown, so everywhere you go, you're rewarded with a dramatic view of the Pacific. It's considered Oregon's whale-watching capital, with thousands making their way past Oregon each fall and spring. Fishing and whale-watching excursions regularly set sail from this little harbor. Leaving Depot Bay, you'll soon find yourself at Cape Fowlweather, a basalt outcropping that looms 500 feet above the water. It was here, in 1778, British Captain James Cook first sighted the mainland of North America on the Pacific coast. A fierce storm that almost put an end to his expedition burned this rugged stretch of coastline its name. Coastal weather can change by the hour. You will find a lot of wet days, but rain can become blue sky with white clouds in an afternoon. Mist kissing the headlands burns away. Or storms can last for days. Some people come for those storms. Whether you find sunbursts of happiness or cloud cover like a quilt, there's always a reason to come back. Like Lincoln City, Newport is one of the larger towns on the byway. The historic bayfront on the north side of Yaquena Bay hosts one of Oregon's largest commercial fishing fleets. It has a busy, genuine working waterfront field, with fish plants and boats coming and going from as far away as Alaska. On the south side of the bay is the Oregon Coast Aquarium. Share waters beneath the ocean with sharks and rays. And don't miss the sea otters at mealtime.
Now, all four of our otters were rescued otters, they were found out in the wild.
For the next 50 miles, your trip along Highway 101 hugs the coast. Many more state parks offer opportunities to stop and take in outstanding vistas, crashing waves, and offshore rock formations. Two small towns of note are Waldport and Yawhats. Waldport sits on Alsea Bay, where fishing, clamming, and crabbing are popular. The 40-mile stretch south of Waldport marks steep headlands, jagged volcanic outcrops, and jaw-dropping scenery, the rugged edge of the Oregon coast. Yawhats is a quiet, unhurried artist town just a couple of miles north of Cape Perpetua. Drive to the top of this bluff, and you'll be 800 feet above the water. On a clear day, you can see 70 miles of Oregon coastline. Drive past Hacita Head Lighthouse to the sea lion caves. A quick elevator ride 200 feet down puts you in America's largest sea cave, the year-round home of wild stellar sea lions. Rugged cliffs give way to graceful beaches as you approach Florence. In the spring, be on the lookout for wild rododendrons along the road sides. Similar to Newport, you'll find an historic old-town commercial district along the Sayuslaw River. Florence is the gateway to the Oregon Dunes National Recreation Area, a 47-mile sandbox of windsculpted sand dunes towering 500 feet above sea level. These are the largest expanse of coastal sand dunes in North America. Reed's Port is at the center of the Oregon Dunes. But you can do more than ride a dune buggy or motorcycle. A short three miles east of town on Highway 38, more than 100 Roosevelt elk reside at the Dean Creek Elk Viewing Area. Early mornings or just before dusk are the best times to photograph the herd. Paying homage to Oregon's timber heritage, Reed's Port hosts an annual chainsaw sculpting championship, a time to watch three-dimensional artwork come to life right before your eyes. Mountains of sand continue at Winchester Bay. You'll also find an active marina here. It's a great place to try your hand at crabbing or take a charter for salmon or bottom fishing. The dunes end and you enter the coast's largest urban area, at Coos Bay. It has the deepest natural harbor between Seattle and San Francisco. Foreign vessels sail under the massive McCullough Bridge. You may have noticed dotted along the Pacific Coast Scenic Byway are many beautiful and iconic bridges. The Megler Bridge in Astoria, Yaquena Bay Bridge in Newport, Alsea Bay Bridge in Waldport, Sayuslaw River Bridge in Florence, and the magnificent McCullough Bridge in Coos Bay are works of art in their own right. Charleston is slightly off the byway at the mouth of the bay. It was once an old waterfront fishing village and has become a commercial and sport fishing center. From here, the Charleston to Bandon tour route offers another side trip off the byway. It's a wonderful way to explore a variety of natural Pacific coast beauty in a number of settings: beaches, vistas, gardens, and more. Giant sea stacks, a tiny lighthouse, and an old town await you in Bandon. Do you like to golf? This remote area on the Oregon coast has not one, but three of the most stunning and challenging golf courses in the world. As you drive south of town, look for brilliant red bogs in the fall. You're passing through the cranberry capital of Oregon. After a trek through forests and farmlands, you'll reach Port Orford. The wild coast has begun. You're in the most westerly city in the continental United States. And you've reached some of the most awesome scenery on the byway. Here, you can watch a fishing fleet launched by Crane in one of only six dolly ports in the world. Port Orford covers less than two square miles. It's similar to many communities that call this All-American Road home. Small in size, still with a lot to offer. Like Manzanita, with a vibrant business district and beautiful setting at the base of Nea County Mountain, you can board a fishing charter out of Garibaldi, swim in freshwater lakes near Dune City, catch world-class windsurfing at Pistol River. There is little development from Port Orford to Gold Beach, outlet for the renowned Rogue River. Feel like going for a ride? Jet boat excursions run from May into October up this wild and scenic river. Or maybe a midday walk on an uncrowded beach is more your speed. The last dozen miles of the Pacific Coast Byway leading into Brookings save some of the best for last. Treat yourself to frequent stops along the Samuel H. Boardman Scenic Corridor. Short hikes reward you with the best views in this shining stretch of coastline. Walk, relax, and be amazed along the coves in the crashing surf. The world's northernmost redwood grove is eight miles from the mouth of the Chaco River in Brookings. So you've toured nature's finest art museum. You've dined elegantly, hung out with sea lions, unwound like you wish you could every day. What else is there to do? Step back in history near Astoria. Ride a horse along the waves near Florence. Pet a baby tiger near Bandon. Hike a trail, sample gourmet cheese, eat fresh-caught crab, watch a sunset.
When you come to the Oregon coast and walk on the beaches or go to the headlands and go to the small coastal towns, you really can commune with nature, and you don't have huge numbers of people. But you're also able to take in one of America's last great unspoiled seascapes.
So what draws you to the Oregon coast? What favorite places lure you back again and again? Each visit is different. The ocean, the sky, the light, and the experience always continue to amaze. Shouldn't you be there?
Wildfire, as everyone knows, has emerged as one of the big, major issues affecting Oregon, and for that matter, all western states. A real actionable response that's including how do we fight fire, actively managing our forest so that we don't have the fuels out there? And how are we gonna protect communities from smoke exposures? The council's really set up to have a comprehensive strategy that's based on action and based on protecting our communities.
The primary focus we, as a board, have come through with is that in researching the policies for fire management, yes, prescribed fire has its place on the landscape, but not during fire season. We, as a county, passed a proclamation that says "Once the state fire marshal declares fire season, it'll be nothing but full suppression." And recently took a resolution to the National Association of Counties that essentially says that they support coordination between agencies and local governments for the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens regarding fire. Prescribed fire, fire season, anything that affects our citizens.
This is Lily Morgan from Josephine County. And we are at the Rogue Leadership Forum today, looking at the best possible partnerships that we can come up with to fight the fire issues and the smoke issues that we're facing in southwest Oregon. So looking forward to coming up with solutions and the partnerships to get the job done so we don't face what we have the last few years with catastrophic fires and smoke that invades our communities for months to come. So this is a good opportunity, and we hope to be successful in the outcome.
Seeing so many people come together has really been exciting for me because there's a lot of expertise, there's a lot of resources. And as we attempt to do a shared stewardship approach to keeping people safe, it's really important that we get together. So my name is Merv George Jr., and I'm the Forest Supervisor for the Rogue River Siskiyou National Forest. The first thing is making sure to get fires out if they're threatening life and property. The second thing that I'm gonna focus in on is when it's safe to do so, to put some fire on the landscape when it's cooler and not during fire season, to reduce these same fuels that are giving us so much fits during the fire season.
Bob Horton, I'm the Fire Chief of Jackson County Fire District 3 in southern Oregon. The challenges that are facing us in terms of the mega fires and the wildfires that we've been experiencing out in this valley, particularly in the last couple of years, but across the state and across the region, incredibly concerning to us and the fire community, those in our communities in general, our constituents and our patrons are extremely concerned, as they ought to be. And really, the takeaway from the work that's being done now is this is an extraordinary collaboration of dozens on dozens of interested stakeholder groups who are coming together with a common purpose. It's really an inspiring showing of humanity to not only be able to provide for a greater quality of life for our people, but to be strong stewards of our land so that our future for us and generations to come is incredibly bright.
Very pressing issue. It's bearing down on us, fire season is approaching. And I am really interested in preventing my home and other homes in my community from being impacted by wildfires specifically from being burnt down. That's my main reason for being involved.
Quite a collaboration of folks. We're here looking for practical solutions to help us unravel some of the issues surrounding wildfires today here in the state of Oregon. And my focus really is on planning for large wildfire events in advance of their occurrence. That way, when they do occur, we can respond more appropriately to those situations.
Well, I just think it's grand if all of the people all over the state have come together today to be concerned about water. It just warms my heart. Because I know that they really will leave here today feeling more impressed about the water. Because I have told them that we're all born in water, we cannot live without it. It's our job to take care and stop the garbage in the rivers and streams and oceans because there's life in that water, and it's our job to keep it clean for them. Because we cannot live on this planet without the animal kingdom. I was in Ohio, at the Ohio River, with Dr. Emoto, the Japanese scientist who had proven water could hear. He and I stood on the riverbank, blessed the Ohio River that they had us come to do. And I prayed that God has still kept the river good for them over there. We were taught from Berlin that prayer works. You too, remember your prayers because they work. It has nothing to do with religion or church.
There's something about having land and sea. Never having to choose between digging in or looking out. Here, you can go where the spirit or the wind moves you. To the tops of the trees, along secluded beaches, or into more wild and scenic rivers than anywhere else in the western United States. We're the closest place to the sunset while still keeping your feet dry and a destination where anyone can begin. We share more than we keep, so you can see more than you imagined. This is a place you have to touch, hold, and feel to believe. The entire shoreline of the West Coast's best coast is open to you. The entire shoreline of the west coast's best coast is open to you, and playgrounds made of forests are waiting for you. Escape to Curry County, and don't leave anything out.
Roadway departure fatalities are a serious and often preventable problem in the United States. The Federal Highway Administration reports that 54% of all highway fatalities are caused by drivers leaving their lane of travel. The Oregon Department of Transportation is taking a proactive approach to reduce this kind of tragedy by implementing a centerline and shoulder rumble strip program.
Rumble strips are one of the most low-cost, cost-effective countermeasures that we can apply across the system.
Rumble strips are grooved patterns on the roadway that make a rumbling sound and a physical vibration, immediately warning inattentive drivers that they're leaving their driving lane. Rumble strips allow drivers to self-correct and avoid an accident.
About 67% of fatal crashes in Oregon are road departure crashes, which are a vehicle can leave the lane to the right and hit a ditch or a rock or a tree, something like that, or cross over the centerline to the left and get in a head-on collision or a sideswipe meeting type crash.
Over an eight-year period, ODOT engineers studied segments of 16 different highways and concluded that rumble strips are highly effective.
Is Court on the phone?
All right, we are back in session. It is 1:41 on November 20, 2019. Coming out of executive session, staff is to proceed as directed, and we will now go to number 11A, a high order for deputy code enforcement officer.
So this would be in order to hire the deputy code enforcement officer we'd been working on for the past six months, and with a start date of December 2nd.
So moved?
I'll second that.
Further discussion? Roll, please.
Commissioner Pash.
Wow, yes.
Commissioner Gold.
Aye.
Commissioner Boyce is absent, so let the record show, the vote was two to zero.
She got my name right. All right, next we have 11B, a Pointe County register.
So at this time, I would recommend that we take items 11B, C, and then 12A and postpone those until December 11th.
So moved?
I'll second that.
Further comment? Roll, please.
Commissioner Pash.
Aye.
Commissioner Gold.
Aye.
Let the record show, the vote is two to zero.
Got my name right twice, wow. All right, we're going to do a director's report now?
Sure. Just real quick, I'll try and make it quick, because I know we have a lot going on. I just want to let you know our special district seminar or session that we have scheduled for December 9th, that is going to be held at the Elks Club, and due to some scheduling conflicts, that's actually going to be at 2:00 to 4:00 instead of 5:00 to 7:00. So I was able to make it 2:00 to 4:00 in the press release, so that will be happening. We have somebody from Department of Revenue coming, and then also somebody from the Special Districts Association. Josh, our park director, was down at the port of Brookings Harbor last night, providing more information on our proposal to help manage their RV park, so we should have some updates coming on that very soon. Yesterday, Brookings, City of Brookings, staff and staff from their police department met with staff from our sheriff's office and myself, and we talked about the consolidation of the 911 system or the PSAP plan that we were working on. And I'll be bringing a report or recommendation back to the board at the next meeting on what we should do with that.
How did the study go? Did they recommend having one county 911?
They did, and they recommended that it be in the Gold Beach area. However, it was based on some incorrect information that was brought to their attention early on, so it almost would require a whole new study. So, but there was a lot of really good information that came out of there, which we'll talk about. So we'll go through that on December 11th. Originally, we had discussed a developers agreement a while back, and I was supposed to meet with Brookings, so I met with Janelle at the City of Brookings yesterday on that. And we have some further conversations to occur on that, but we may be asking the board to proceed with an application, perhaps, to take advantage of borrowing money to a special district to help that developers agreement go through, or a similar developers agreement or some form of agreement to go through to help get that property so it can be developed. And then we have a software demonstration next week on the 27th. As you know, this would be looking at finance and then some HR capabilities. We also found out that it can take on planning, building, and code enforcement capabilities as well, and they also can do assessments with that, or I'm sorry, help the assessor's office with that software as well. So the assessor has been meeting or having conversations with that software company to see if it meets his needs, so we'll have some more information about that after our demonstration next week as well. The last thing is I mentioned to you before that DEQ has approached us about taking the residential onsite waste disposal system program, or basically the Septic Program back in house. We know for our county, it would take in about $50,000 in permit fees. That's not enough for a full-time person. When you look at the amount of inspections, it is quite a few, quite a bit of inspections. It's 275 inspections a year, based on this past year's records. So I have reached out to Josephine County, because they're also considering taking the program back in house and said, hey, is there any way we can partner? Because they will need, they need, they have need for about one and a half people, and we have need for about a half a person. So we're going to see if we can do some partnership on that. If we can't, then my recommendation would be that we perhaps pursue a part-time person if we can. The inspection part of it, we'd have to really figure out a way to make that efficient, but we don't really have a choice on that matter, I think, moving forward. That is all I have for the director's report.
Okay. Commissioner Boyce not being here. Commissioner Gold.
Okay, I've got a couple of things. I did send out probably over 50 emails to get the strategic plan survey, and I've gotten some back, and they're sending it to individuals, so I think that's good. I've been working with SWAC and beyond, and they're having two sessions each week, and there's been an average attendance of 17. Also, I went to Curry County Transit Meeting, and they have purchased a new building on Alder, and also the STIP funds are being used. And one of the things that was put forth in the STIP funds was that there was going to be a run between Brookings and Gold Beach, and that has not been successful so far. So that's it for today.
Commissioner Gold, is that STIP funds or SBI?
STIF. And those are the, what happens is anybody who gets a paycheck, I think it's 0.5%, goes out, and it goes to transportation funds, and then they're given to all of the various counties, so.
It seems I was left off of the updates. I'm not allowed to comment, so this meeting is adjourned.
No, it's not. He's teasing, because we have to still address another issue, so.
Okay, darn it.
I apologize for missing your name.
Commissioner here, you just didn't get your name on there.
All right, so next we're going to do discussion action items. Assigned vital, oh, wait a minute.
So it would be to revisit item 6A.
You were right, okay.
In the beginning of the meeting, Cheryl McDonald was not present to present on that. She is not here right now either, but I do have an update for the board, and that is you do have the financial information in your packet, and I have a message here that it is time-sensitive, so even though she was not here, she would still like you to act on it. She did not realize that she was being asked to present on it, so.
Well, I'm going to move that we accept the Curry County 4-H Extension Service District Financial Review.
I'll second it. Further discussion? Roll, please.
Mr. Pash.
Yes.
Commissioner Gold.
Aye.
Let the record show, two to zero? That's all I had.
This meeting is adjourned. See you in about 10 minutes for a workshop.
Okey-dokey.
No rest for the wicked.